Welcome everyone to the Town of Gipsy Playing Board Meeting for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please join me for the pledge to start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, before we get into business, just want to make make a note that a longtime board member, Ben Pagnanelli, decided to retire from the board. And the town board has appointed three three new members. We have a permanent member on board who comes by Sid over here.
Aye.
And we have two alternates appointed, one of which is here tonight, filling in is Mike Trebek. So, in case you see new faces here. And we have one other new appointee from the fourth ward, Bob Simpson. So he'll be filling in as an alternate base as well. All right, starting off right at the beginning is, oh, I just. Can't hear? So everybody's, make sure your mics are all pulled down.
Pulled down, yeah.
Yes, or not. We get some feedback from the ceiling speaker sometimes. All right, the other one that I wanted to mention was the, if you're here for Stratford Farms subdivision, that's been taken off the agenda. First up, Salt Point Center. I see Jeff is online tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board. Joined certainly with Ken and with the applicant, Mr. Wogshol is on the is on the line as well. So, thank you again for for having us on the agenda. And if maybe Ken, you want to share the share the screen there?
Yep, I can hear.
That's nice.
Yeah, that's not the site, though.
That looked better.
So, really, since the last time we were here, we've continued to add detail to the site and respond to a number of comments. I think probably the 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 most significant changes that we did here are, start to roll the amenities into the site plan. We've been talking about them. And since once things start stop moving on the plan, we're able to add them into the into the drawings. So what you see is the walking trail on the on the lower section with the dog park inside. We've added children's playground play area in the middle there. We have a community garden, added bocce courts over on the end of of Building Three.
Over here.
Yep, you know, maintain the walking connection up the hill behind, which which approaches the County Rail Trail. You know, we have the other amenities which have have always been on here with the sidewalks, the bike racks, the the bus stop, the things that we've talked about. In in developing the amenities, we've added some some minor structures in the site to make things flow better. So we have the maintenance shed, we have shed for the community garden tools and materials. We have we have a shed for the for the bocce equipment as well, and any other recreation equipment might might be necessary. Added a gazebo at the at the entrance off of Salt Point Turnpike. And I think those are the only. Of course, we had to buy the bus shelter on there already. As as we reworked the plan and the and the square footages, one additional one-bedroom unit was added to the to the plan, and we had a reduction in commercial area of six hundred and forty-one square feet. So, all that's been accounted for in the in the in the tables that we've provided to you. I I think the other significant thing that we've worked through is the roundabout, some of that design, and particularly, I guess there were two issues in particular. One is trying to to make sure we had buffers between the sidewalk and the roadway, so there was an area for snow storage. And we've either accomplished that everywhere, or Michael Imandola from from Colliers, I think will be on the call, and he can address or he can address directly with staff any issues that we might have to getting buffers everywhere. So but we have worked through a lot of those design issues to make sure there's there's snow storage and 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 improve pedestrian safety at those sidewalk areas. And then we also worked through the concern about no left turn from the gas station onto westbound Salt Point Turnpike, so that that there was a concern that that vehicles wouldn't be able to make a left turn out of there. And I believe that's been that's been addressed to the satisfaction of the parties, so.
Yep.
It was her.
That's great. All right.
And, you know, I we know, well, anyway, look, we know there's some details to work out, utilities and then some split comments and questions, and we'll continue to work through those with staff. We don't think any of those are are showstoppers in our design there. So again, those are those details. And then we know the board has a couple of questions, a couple of questions and concerns. One about the the landbank parking. And the second is about the the connection to the rail trail. We can either address those, or or we can come back to those and and talk talk with the board about those in some detail. I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, which order we you would like us to to go. But I guess I thought I thought I'd stop for a minute and let get 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 the get staff comments out.
Yeah, I think so. And then I would like to hear more if you have any more information on the rail trail and the, at least.
Well, right, I I guess the, and can you put that back up for a second? I I think the, what's really become clear to us is that the, not not to put words in their mouth, but but my understanding is the county deals with connections to the rail trail throughout the county, not just here. And they are very reluctant to have a connection that isn't ADA accessible. And I think we I think I think we I think I understand their their reticence on on that issue. They can't make an exception here and and try to enforce it elsewhere from a practical point. So, okay, so so that leads to a couple of things. One, you know, could we provide a a path up the hill that meets the ADA requirement of of a minimum of five percent, because that's the that would be the the requirement there? And the answer is, of course, I mean, you can you can you can engineer anything, but the the but there's always a how is that, how is that accomplished? And and as we have, I think, going about a number of times, that it would really change the grading significantly along the hillside and 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 remove a whole bunch of the existing trees. Right, and wasn't something that that we thought was was necessarily appropriate. And so but then, so then the the other concern, as I as I I read the county's comments, they're they're concerned about the steepness for bikes coming coming down the path, and a five percent path is 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 steep. And, you know, what happens if and when there's a there's, you know, somebody gets out of control at the end of the the end of the the trail there, and you're out in the middle of Salt Point Turnpike? So, we have always kind of thought of this as a as a walking trail. And the the issue of of bike traffic kind of took second seat in 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 our minds as we were talking about this. But I think we need to go back to, it is a walking trail. It doesn't need to be ADA accessible. We think it's 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 fine that the trail would end at the property line and and not officially connect to the the rail trail. But it's a pretty easy, I've even up there and and stood there, it's a pretty easy walk from the end of where that trail would be to the to the trail. Somebody could extend their walk quite simply. It would be a surface that would not really be 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 good for bikes. That would be, we've proposed wood chips, I think that's the best, maybe the best kind of surface. And and then we've kind of eliminated the the concerns about the terminus down at the Salt Point Turnpike. If someone wants to bike, there's a there's a very easy path just down a road from the site over to North Brand that gets you onto it. And if you were coming from somewhere else and already in your car, there's certainly plenty of access parking over at at the Morgan Lake Access. There's lots of other access points, but as a walking trail, we think it's appropriate, really, what we've what we've what we've always shown here. So that's, I guess that's the.
Thanks. What I remember of Morgan Lake, that seems steeper than ADA myself. And I know there's some steep parts along the trail itself that are not ADA compliant. I'm not sure where they're coming from, the new, every trail has to have that connection. Every connection has to have that, but, any case, that's.
Um, we're happy we're happy to meet with them, and Eric, Eric, actually, I talked with Eric about this earlier, and I think we we, you know, he, if the if the town would be would be would would meet with us with the county, I think that might 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 push them a little bit. But but we have not gotten them to to be able to go anywhere. So we're certainly hoping if there's a there's another meeting to participate in that to try to change that.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Let me go to Eric now for department's comments.
Sure. As, thanks, Jeff, for the summary. I think you covered a couple of updates I was going to give, so I'll skip those. Yes, there's an additional residential unit. Total, yes, there was an incremental commercial addition. Overall, the the business and institutional usage actually has gone up slightly to the agenda incorrectly has a square footage from last time. The overall business and institutional use is now twenty-one thousand nine ninety. And the units are now at ninety total. The, I think the issue, the main issue for the board tonight has to do with the proposed parking. Historically, in review of this application, the board has come to a point where I think it's pretty comfortable, has expressed comfort with most of the layout and worked through a lot of the issues. The issue of use and the parking demand, the board had requested a shared parking analysis because of the mixed use, and our parking table does not accommodate that very well. The applicant provided a shared use table, but there is still the S- the Salt Point Center District requirement, which exceeds the proposed, the absolute number of proposed, the Salt Point Center required numbers is in excess of what would be provided. With the shared parking analysis, there would be enough, but that would be at the board's discretion. They would have to accept that analysis, and there's no requirement on the site plan to provide the specific uses that were used in that shared parking analysis. In fact, they're very similar to the Salt Point Center District. So that would be a discussion point for the board. If the board is satisfied with the provided parking, then you could proceed. I think there's a couple of other issues to address. If the board, the board had expressed interest in having some landbanked parking or some additional parking available on the plan or in the future, the applicant proposed these mechanical stacking units. If the those are now under consideration by the ZVA, not for a variance, they are under consideration as to whether or not they are allowed as parking. If the board wants to see those stackers as a part of the plan or landbanked, then it would appear premature to proceed with the app, to proceed with a decision on the application until that's determined by the ZVA. However, if the board is comfortable without them, then it could probably proceed. Yep. I did speak with Jeff. Somebody had raised the question of whether an alternative to mechanical stackers might be something like a parking management plan with tandem spaces or a different arrangement of parking within their building envelope as as has been planned for the Vassar College Inn on that site plan.
Yeah, need a valet of some sort.
If that was an item for discussion, then the board could proceed conditioned on some reasonable layout and a parking management plan. You'd have to decide if you wanted to see that and have staff review if you're approval, or if you were comfortable with that as a condition of approval. So that's that's probably the main issue. Also, if the board would like to proceed, the the trail issue, the board should also address. If you're going to proceed with as a condition of approval, what do you want to see? Are you comfortable with it as it is, as a bike path? Do you want to see a loop? The board had previously discussed some different things for that. So just let staff know how you would like that to pan out as a condition of approval. Similarly, for the the other amenities, the dog park and the the dog, there were two things, the dog park fence and.
The playground, playground.
Yeah, the the floodplain administrator had said that they're not allowed because of the flood. They're in the, not just the floodplain, but the floodway. So I just asked the applicant, you know, is it okay if those go away? Or do you want to see the applicant pursue a floodplain variance for them? Again, as a condition of approval, if you decide to go that way. Otherwise, for planning, I think most of the issues are addressed. There's some DOT roundabout issues to be addressed as a subject of subject to DOT approval. And then I think our engineering and traffic consultant have some comments. Oh, the the, I don't know if Aspen is here today, I think not. But she wrote a letter, basically, the environmental issues with regard to endangered threatened species are resolved by the plan, and she's recommended that the board could go ahead with an aquatic resource permit.
And as far as the amenities, if they, if there's, if it's a permit that's available, if they can get a variance, I mean, for something like that, I'd like to see more amenities than not. But we'll see what the board thinks when we go around later. At this point, we'll go to Andy.
Sure, yeah, most of our comments have been addressed at this point. We still have a few SWIP stormwater comments to be addressed, but I don't think, like, like Jeff said, I don't think anything is really a showstopper, they're technical mostly. One of the things that we had asked them to do was to do a video inspection of the downstream sewer. We did find an issue there, now proposing to repair it, which is great. It's a section of line under Salt Point Turnpike, we have some comments related to that, mainly technical in nature, traffic control type of issue comments. That's that's pretty much it, I'll.
Sounds good, that sewer has been an open question for a while, so that's good that that got resolved. And Mark, oh, no, it's not Mark, Kevin is here tonight to represent our traffic consultant. Kevin? Kevin, you out there? You're not on, you're not on mute, but we can't hear you. Well, we have the traffic consultants' letters. Kevin, hear me now? Ah, there we go. There you go, all right. Yeah, we want to hear what your comments are, especially about the parking, because that's a concern as well as the traffic flow.
Yep, I I think Eric did a good job providing a summary of the the parking analysis, which which we did review, and and it does show that there's sufficient parking for the mixed use on both the weekday and weekend analysis based on the parking provided. And then some of our other comments were were more technical with the site plan and roundabout, which which can be addressed by by the applicant, we think, and nothing too major with with a lot of those comments. And then we we kind of had, if they were to go with the stackers, just asking more questions with it on operationally, how we would operate with most of those typically being a valet situation with an operator being on site, and the car is queuing in a certain location. But I think that was really it from from our comments.
Okay, thanks. And so are you comfortable with the way they did the shared parking analysis?
Yeah, yeah, we are, we are comfortable with the way they did the shared parking.
Okay, thanks for that feedback. All right, at this point, we get to move, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion passes seven zero. Is there anyone in the audience here today or on Zoom which to comment on this application for Salt Point Center? Yep, come on down.
So I have a simple question, my name is Ken Peterson. I own the adjacent property next to the site. I was just reviewing the comments for the review for the planning board, and number two states that the access to the Salt Point Turnpike incurred cut for the gas station was changed, they shortened that, and then he mentioned that before.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But it says, subject to New York State Department of Traffic permit.
DOT has to.
So will it, once they issue the permit, if and when, will it deviate? Will it change? Or are we are we locked into what's the design that's been done?
DOT is going to be the ultimate approval. So there is potential for it to change, but they've designed it, they've been working with the DOT, so in theory, it should shouldn't change much.
And so like, for our end, what was changed at our request, I appreciate them accommodating the planning board and.
Yeah, I don't see the need for that thing to be so long there. It went way back from.
And as for signage as well?
For, and they're going to take, and I think our traffic consultants had to remove the no-left turn sign.
So, it's subject to the permit being issued, though?
Yes, Department of Transportation does have the last say, I guess. But as of now, that's what we asked them to do.
All right, thank you very much.
Great, thanks for your comment. Anyone else in the room wish to comment on Salt Point Center? Not seeing anybody on Zoom. I see Louis, your hand is up, although I know earlier you mentioned a different application, but perhaps you have a comment about this one? Louis, your hand is raised?
No, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I'll lower it again.
Okay. All right.
Fine.
All right, we're good for now. At this point, I think we're going to go around board for comments first before I decide whether to come adjourn or close the hearing tonight. And going around the board for comments, please, please let me know what you think of of the parking, in particular, the stackers. If we like the design of the stackers for for landbanked or some other way of doing it, or if we even need the landbanked. And the and the trail issue as well, there's a concern to hold that up. All right, let me start with Peter.
First, I, with regard to the the mechanical stacking, I would probably, I would advise you to save your time and money and effort, because I don't think that's probably going to be a viable option. If our consultant is advising us that the shared parking analysis is is valid, I think that's, you know, I would support that. I would also advise you to look at a parking management plan before our next meeting, so that we would have an opportunity to take a look at that as well as a possible alternative. But it's nice to have options. I have a question for our our engineer. In your your comments on this application, responses one through eight, I'm not going to go into them in in detail, but there's one common element to all of them is comment remains, comment remains, comment remains, comment remains. It's concerning to me for this reason, and that is, we've had this application for a long time. And either they can't, don't have an answer, or that's really is my concern. Do they have an answer or not? They've had this this information, your comments, for a year, and they're still, they're still not responded to, and I'm concerned about that. Are you concerned?
I I I am not, because I see progress. I've seen them addressing comments, you know, the the list is shrinking, that's how we do it. You know, they go away as we as they address them. I see that they're they're, I see progress, so I'm not, I'm not concerned. I see them working towards addressing the the issues.
All right, you are a watchdog, that's why I ask.
Regarding, there's, we have a letter here from Mr. Peterson's attorney. Just wanted to let him know that, you know, to to we represented, when Mr. Peterson appeared here the last time, that we would keep his concerns at the forefront. I think we've done that, and we will follow up on that to the best of our ability.
Yep.
With regard to the playground, you know, I would encourage you just to pursue the variance, because there's very little, there are very little amenities, particularly for for children here. I know there were some comments about the type of playground equipment that you could use there that would be acceptable, but I certainly think it's worth a a couple of questions. And would be worth your time and effort.
Yep, I agree with that. Is that all right?
Thank you.
And we go next to Sid, if you have any comments here, though you're new to the board, but if you.
I'm still not really focused, meaning, I'm just going through that, thank you.
Sure thing. Nicole?
Okay, so it's funny to me that parking is now okay when when it seemed as though the site was short. If that's the case, if the traffic consultant does seem to think that the parking is fine, then we can only go by what our consultants give us as far as information is concerned.
Yeah, they went and did that shared analysis, which was the new, the new thing.
The only concern that I have about that is particularly that restaurant. And I understand that, you know, this is shared parking, you're going to have retail, you're going to have residential. A restaurant tends to be open until maybe ten, eleven o'clock at night, when people are often home from work. So that is really a concern for me. Where are people going to park if there's no longer any more parking on the site? Because you can't park on Salt Point Turnpike. So that's still kind of a concern for me. And unfortunately, so is the trail. Because I understand that you you're stating that it's really more for bikes. However, people do walk on rail trails, people that are handicapped do walk on rail trails and walkways, walkway over the Hudson, for instance, I know that's much bigger. But to just say that it's not going to be ADA compliant, I don't, I don't think that that's right or fair. Because then you're cutting out anyone who's handicapped and is in a wheelchair or or needs some type of device to help them get to where it, to where they need to go. But again, I might be the only one that feels that way, but I I do feel like we need to have further discussion on those two topics. And that's all I want to say.
Yep, I know, I know the, yeah, we talked about. Yep, I know, I know the, yeah, we talked about doing an offline meeting with the county and trying to understand better. I know there's points in the trail that are not handicap already, and possibly some access points as well.
And those should really be fixed, because then you're cutting out people that are handicapped, and you're, then they're not, they can't go any further, so.
Wouldn't that be up to the county?
It should be.
All right, thanks, Nicole. And what did you think of the stackers versus if we needed to do any?
If, if, you know, I know that the zoning had an issue with the stacking, so if we could do a parking management plan instead, that would be fine. Because I know zoning didn't really feel comfortable with the stacking, and I know some other people don't really feel comfortable with that.
Yep, that's just the thing we're getting.
Right, that was my comment about the stackers, that there has to be an alternative to be looked at.
All right, Penny, Steven?
Yeah, I am not a fan of the stackers, but I do support the consultant's analysis. As far as the rail trail, I'd prefer that we move this forward than hold it up. There is a location, Morgan Lake, that's fairly close to where this is going to be, where people will have ADA access. This looks like a pretty long trail, and to keep it as a walking trail without access to the rail trail, I think there's other options in the area, so this, it isn't that necessary.
Michael, anything, another new board member tonight?
Hi. So as far as the stackers are concerned, I mean, I don't think that's within our concern yet, right? That's before the ZBA. I personally don't like them for the town, and at least not for residential or mixed use, mostly because I wouldn't want my neighbor putting one in their driveway, right? Assuming that we allow something like that in the town. But, and I think I'm not the only one here who thinks that way as far as the stackers are concerned. But for parking, you know, a parking management plan would go a long way here. Or, or in the alternative or conjunction, that if there was other areas on this property that are in the building envelope where land banking could be done. You know, I was just, at our other, at our prior meeting, I was talking about, if the stormwater area on the northeast corner of the site is placed underground, maybe that could be used as land banking, but again, I don't know if there's sufficient turning radius here from the driveway. We haven't seen any kind of analysis on that.
Yeah, it's a tight site.
It's a tight site, so I don't know if that would work. But if there was sufficient space there, which there appears to be, and that stormwater area was underground, that could be a sufficient amount of parking area, of parking space. Or perhaps the parking management plan would be sufficient to alleviate the concerns of the members of this board as well. As far as the path is concerned, you're asking us to approve a unofficial connect, a path that's going to go right up to the property line and then be an unofficial connection, an official unofficial connection to the rail trail. And I don't know how I feel about that, right? Because I'm assuming that at the property line to the border of the rail trail, it's flat land and people are going to walk across it and create a trail. And then if this isn't ADA compliant, what happens if someone who's using an assisted walking device tries to come off the rail trail on this path that isn't marked, because it's not an official connection, and ends up stuck somewhere along this path, right? That's, I think that's the problem with having a non-ADA connection to the rail trail.
And you wind up with a Benny Hill situation.
Right, exactly right.
Aging myself.
So I think that's the issue with that. If you, you know.
Good point.
Having a playground would go a long way, right? There's really no playgrounds in this area for families. So I would urge you to get whatever variance you need to put in those types of amenities. And besides, beyond that, I think that's all my comments on this.
All right, thanks, Michael. I think everybody said my comments mostly. I'm not favored with stack parking myself, and I think the shared analysis goes a long way toward it, but I think the gist I'm getting from other board members is that they'd like to see at least some kind of parking management plan going forward that in case the trigger has to be pulled on that to, depending on what stores go in there, if it's more than one or two restaurants, then you wind up with, as Nicole said, additional cars parking, and you might need to manage that. So, what's the?
Could I ask one quick question?
Sure, Peter.
To the town engineer, there is going to be a replacement of a defective sanitary sewer line. You use the term downstream, but you know, I don't remember which way is downstream from this site to forthward.
It's.
Toward the city, or is it?
Towards the city.
It is toward the city?
Yes.
Is any part of that line in the city?
Yes, yeah, flows along the creek, town owns the line.
No, I understand, but I'm a part of the defective.
Oh, no, no, it's one section of line underneath, it's within the town, yep. One section underneath Salt Point Turnpike that needs to be replaced.
Thanks, thank you.
Another question I just had is, what is in the center of the roundabout as designed? Is that just going to be concrete or brick, or is there going to be a clock or anything like that? Jeff or Ken, do you know?
Yeah, there's no, certainly no structures proposed, I'll break my DMs right away.
Okay. So what does, what does the board feel about? Yeah, I think we want to see that parking management plan is what we're going to do, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, we could show you some of our thoughts at the right point in time?
Jersey comes as a metropolitan detention center in Brooklyn, which is something called Hell on Earth because of its conditions. Another high-profile defense.
Whom are we hearing? We're hearing Louis. Why do we keep coming off of you?
More tax relief is on the way for New York.
Okay, sorry, folks.
Tax it on you, please, tax relief, so it's good. So I think, I think we want to have you do this offline meeting with the county and just discuss the trail a little more. There's at least two or three board members that are really concerned about that, the way it's coming out. So at this point, I move adjourn the public hearing to, let's see, when can you get back?
Although not. Dates, I think I gave you the correct dates.
October 17th.
Wow, because the deadline's Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Guess we're going to have to go November 21st, 2024. Do we hear second?
Second.
Moved to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes, seven zero.
So, again, Chairman, if we could, could we show you some of our thoughts on the parking management?
Yes, that would be good if you had some upfront here.
So, similar to what we did at the Indian Institute in that discussion of a valet area, we looked at an area on the site that could be easily maintained, easily, you know, worked with, and we were able to work with a similar layout plan that we worked with at Vassar, again, for parking, that ended up with 34 spaces in here, which I believe puts us right around the exact number. It does leave an aisle down the middle where there could be an extra car or two if one was needed in there, but it does remove the stackers, and it gives us the ability to work through a couple things with regard to your parking management plan. Two items that we would just adjust, if you look towards the dumpster side, you have walkways that stop right at the car, and those two walkways would just be pushed further back towards the dumpster to give us a little more space, so that the car, it wouldn't impede any of the pedestrian movement down to the walking areas and the amenities.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. I guess the concern is they have to coordinate that too with garbage pickup to get to the dumpsters.
Yeah, I mean, typically, you know, if we were to see the use of this, as you pointed out, with a restaurant, it would be on an evening, it would be on a non-normal hours from where you would have a trash removal.
Correct.
So we didn't think that that would be any conflict of time or use by the facilities.
Okay.
Unless it's a great breakfast restaurant.
You're saying? You never know. I mean, it'll be great to see what businesses come in there, but it is a concern that we have to, you even know, the generic shared parking sounds like it'll work great, and hopefully that is the case, but we have it all covered.
I have a question.
Sure.
And if I.
Hold on.
Sorry.
By my count, what you did there adds 14 spaces over the existing spaces, is that, would that be enough?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're 15, 14, 15 short, so.
Correct.
Of the code.
That, I did take into account removal of the spaces that were there as part of the 34, and that's why it put us over the edge of what we had totaled, which what we would need to meet the requirement.
Okay, you had another comment, Ken?
Yeah, so with regard to the amenities, in the floodplain and floodway, I think, you know, we can talk and work with Andy's and Tom relative to the design of those so that they would not be considered an impact to the floodway. And that would be our goal, would be to do that if possible. And then if we find that we're not, then we'll look at how we can potentially, you know, there's not much space outside of it for amenities the way we were, but maybe we can work through that as well. So, but that would be our goal as well, is to look at the design of those so that they could accommodate and be where a floodplain or floodway would not impact them.
That would be appreciated, because I, you know, that's a great amenity. I assume you have some kids at this site. And other amenities you've added, the bocce and the gardens and such, dog park is all good.
And, and the trail comment, I mean, I understand your point. I think we would still like to have a trail up here, whether we went away from connecting it. It could still come up and loop around the top. It does provide a nice vantage point for people to look out into the floodway in that area in that direction for our residents. So we could, to the comment of making this an unofficial official trail, it could be, we could be brought out, you know, such that, oops, sorry, I was trying to draw on this, but sometimes it doesn't always follow what I want it to do.
Yep, technology.
Yep, it works when it wants to. But.
I get that, I mean, you could, you could come.
Yeah.
Come in with that next time as well, and show, and do the offline meeting.
I think we, I think we heard that you don't like the stackers, we get it. I just wanted to hear from the board if the valet option will meet. Is that the right answer, an acceptable answer to meeting the concern about having parking landbanked? And is where we showed it the right spot from your perspective? We think, we think it's the best spot, but I get if, if we could, if there was some feedback from the board on those two items, I think that would help us a lot to know we're in the, going in the right direction.
Sure.
Does anyone know how it's working out at Vassar?
They just opened about a couple weeks ago, so I haven't heard if they've had to use the landbank parking. Do you know, Ken?
No, they have, they haven't had any events that have required any use of the valet or anything there.
I mean, it's also in the best interest of any business that comes in there, right? If they're going to need it for a busy restaurant, right? So I mean, I think, you know, I think as long as we have a reasonable plan in place for when that would be triggered, you know, it seems, especially given that the shared parking analysis tells us that we're in pretty good shape, you know?
Well, we want it to work, because it doesn't work. We have to reduce the amount of commercial space.
Yeah, we don't want that either.
That's a big multiplier there.
Yep, and the, yep, the applicant does not want to have it not work either. So, we, I think you're going in the right direction there with that, unless you find another spot on the property, as Michael suggested, that, you know, put some stormwater practice underground and for some landbank area, but it is a tight site. All right, and?
And yes, and we are committed to try to keep those amenities, so we'll, yeah, we'll work through what we can with staff there to make that happen.
Do a last minute push on the trail, see what you can, and keep the amenities in. And next time, we can do architecture as well.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, not limited to the following, 1 through 14.
Moved to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes, seven zero. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See ya. Getting close to the end.
Now, you didn't hear who seconded it? Well, who seconded it? Someone volunteered.
So I will.
Can the chairman of the motion and call seconded?
I'll second it.
She, she seconded it.
Sharon, you're on number two duty.
All right.
What's that mean? That doesn't sound good.
That's a different comment.
I just had to break the, you know.
All right, Casper Kill, South Road Development is up next. And there is President Narum, welcome back, guys, it's been a while.
Hi.
Kevin?
Good evening. So I'm Karen Labruto with Lovella Associates, and I'm here representing applicant Casper Kill, One LLC, Kevin Marinin from Ginsburg Development Corporation.
Yes, it's nice to be back. Sorry we were gone so long.
Yes, we were gone for a while figuring some things out.
We had to figure some things out, especially with one of our tenants and so forth, but we're happy to resume and we'll barge ahead and get this finalized. Yep.
So for those that are new to the board, just a brief summary here, the project site's located on South Road, just immediately north of the Friendly Ford. It's approximately just a little over 11 acres. It was approved with the Crown Heights Center Overlay District in January of 2023 by the Town Board. Its existing condition is dilapidated, it's a furniture store and an old concrete plant, I'm sorry, cement plant. We're proposing a mixed-use development with a grocery store, three buildings that are mixed between ground floor retail or non-retail use, and residential dwelling units on top, apartments, 26 in total, and a couple other buildings that are, again, retail, non-retail, and restaurant use. The project requires a approximately 2.5 acre lot line, but requires a lot line adjustment to include 2.5 acres from the adjoining golf course, a lot consolidation, and ultimately site plan review and architectural review approval from the planning board. So we do meet all of the requirements of the Crown Heights Center Overlay District. In the past, we were deficient on open space, but we have remedied that by adding additional lot area from the adjoining golf course, and so we're meeting that 10%, which is required. We've got 11% proposed. So from the last meeting, for those that you guys were here, there are no changes to the general layout, except that access for the tractor trailers, which service the grocery store, can only happen from the northern access entry. And the reason for this is. can only happen from the northern access entry. And the reason for this is because of a D restriction that's in place on the property prohibiting grocery stores from the southern portion of the site. Um, as I mentioned, we did add two-point-five acres from the adjoining grocery store, I'm sorry, adjoining golf course. Previously, it was approximately two acres, uh, to allow, uh, the project to meet the open space requirement. Uh, additionally, we, uh, submitted a shared parking study, uh, at your request as part of our submission, and we are deficient by approximately twenty-five spaces, uh, during the weekend, um, peak parking period. Um, so we're considering options to resolve that situation. Some ideas include a smaller supermarket, removal of the fast food restaurant, removal of the drive-through portion of the fast food restaurant, some combination of the above. So we recognize that's an issue that needs to be resolved and we're working on it. Um, so here is, um, the site plan and so, um, as you can see, it's, uh, you know, pretty much the same as it was last time you saw it. There's a northern and southern access. Um, the, there are, uh, three dwelling units each, uh, in these two buil- two buildings, uh, on the second floor, and the ground floor is all retail or non-retail as is specified to be required by the Crown Heights Center Overlay. Um, in the back here, uh, towards the very east, uh, southeast end of the site, we have, um, sixteen thousand square feet for retail use, and it's also got apartments above. I think there are seventeen apartments up there. Um, we have open space here in the southeast corner, um, and we have the grocery store here up at the northeast and the fast food with the drive-through, um, over here on the northwest side. So this is just a, um, summary of the open space. Um, so as it was conceived, um, in collaboration with staff and also county planning, um, we have this pocket park, which is shown in green, uh, along with the Tree Line Boulevard. We have outdoor eating, um, adjoining a restaurant, um, on the west side of the site. We've got open space at the southeast corner, um, and then we've got some kind of open space, you know, congregation area, um, just to the west or in front of the, uh, major retail spot. So here we have some renderings. You all were requesting these at the last meeting. This is a view to the northeast of the forty thousand square feet, uh, supermarket. This is a view to the southeast, so you have the supermarket in the foreground. Um, in the, the very back, on the very, um, kind of like at the middle of the image, is the, um, retail, sixteen thousand square feet of retail on the ground floor, and, uh, the upper floor is seventeen dwelling units. Um, then we have, um, buildings, uh, building five, which is, um, non-retail service industry business on the ground floor and three dwelling units on the, uh, second floor. Similarly, it's kind of cut off here, um, is the building group six. And again, it's non-retail on the ground floor and, um, three dwelling units on the upper floor. And so here's the view to the east at the south entry. So this is, you know, to the, to the right here at the south end of the site. Um, we've got the retail, non-retail on the bottom floor. You can see the peaked roof, uh, with the dormers. That's where the residential units are. Here in between, um, kind of hidden is the plaza between the two buildings. Uh, again, we've got the retail on the bottom floor with the apartments on the top. And then at the end of the terminus of this, um, south access is the, uh, sixteen thousand square foot retail area with, again, apartments on top, seventeen dwelling units. Um, right here on the left of the image or north of this area is, um, the retail and restaurant use. And here you have in the foreground, the, uh, restaurant, outdoor eating area.
Can I ask you a quick question? In that you were only showing two lanes there on the site plan. There are three lanes.
That, that's correct. So we, we got these renderings just before this, right at about the submission deadline. And so there are some things that need to be reconciled.
Okay, so, but there will be three, uh.
Yes, that's what's been discussed and we're working to show that as part of our next submission.
I'll just let anybody listening know that's that Neptune Road there.
Oh, thank you, yes.
One other question on that. Um, I thought the actual land goes up. This drawing sends, suggests it's a very flat. Is that correct?
It's gonna be a lot of site work, Mr. Leveson.
It's coming down from where it was.
Yeah, so the grade of the rear of the site will have to be brought down so that the rendering is, as far as I have been assured, accurate.
Okay.
To the future condition. Uh, if we showed the rear of the property, you'd see a big retaining wall that was very high.
It, it's coming down, but it'll still be a twenty-five to thirty-foot grade change from front to back.
Yeah, I think it's showing, I mean, it, it showed like a ten-foot, uh, grade changes you're going through the site.
Do, do you know the composition of the, i- is it rock at the rear of the property or is it soil?
It's rock.
So you're.
I mean, there's, there's a mix, but.
Yeah, we'll get into all the.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of rock. And there's plenty of soil, but there's plenty of rock.
Yeah. Um, you all did receive, um, the architectural floor plans, which included the elevations, and that helps to better understand the topography of the site, um, post-development.
All right, continue.
Okay, so here's a view to the south. So we're standing in front of the grocery store. We're looking south. Uh, the break between the two buildings that you see, excuse me, is between, uh, buildings five and building six. So again, the ground floor is, uh, non-retail or service industry, and the upper stories are three apartments in each of those buildings. Um, you see the backside here of, um, buildings, uh, I think it's building three, which is retail and, um, and restaurant. Okay, um, so this just defines that better for you. Um, so just summarizing the comments that we received, um, there's a lot of New York State DOT coordination that will have to occur as part of this project. It's right off Route Nine. They've got, um, you know, we're obviously modifying access, adding access. Um, and so we need the highway work permit. Um, so that affects questions relevant, uh, to pedestrian crosswalks across Route Nine, um, any snow storage in the right-of-way, any traffic signal pole relocations, uh, the location of a bus shelter, um, and our entry and exit off of, you know, the, into the access. Um, as I mentioned, we did supply the parking, shared parking analysis, and we are deficient on parking by about twenty-five spaces. Um, we're working through this. As I mentioned, possibly a smaller supermarket, smaller fast food, no fast food, no drive-through, some combination of all those. Um, the access again for tractor trailers is restricted to the north access only due to, uh, the D restriction on the southern portion of the site. Um, and as far as the sewer goes, we're working through those, um, questions and considerations with staff. Um, we're, um, pursuing scoping and pressure testing of the force main, video of the scope, video scoping of the line and, uh, capacity considerations as specified by Andy Learn. Um, uh, we'll use water use data for sewer calculation flows. And so that's it for our presentation.
All right, thanks. I appreciate all those, uh, renderings. That, uh, helps a lot because it was just a flat thing on a paper for a few months.
Yes.
Gives us a much better idea. There's some nice architecture and everything as well. All right, let's, uh, go to Kirsten.
Okay, thank you for the overview. Appreciate it. Um, just for the new members of the board and for the project record, as it has been a little while since you were back before the board, uh, um, the application is on for seeker review, uh, for a type-one action subject to a coordinated review. The planning board did circulate its lead agency intent in February twenty twenty-three, and to date, no objections have been received. Um, it is also on for a lot line revision review, site plan and architectural review. Um, and regarding the seeker component, um, I've consistently included a note about the blasting management plan. I know that it has stated repeatedly, uh, comment noted or like to be addressed. I just, I want to make sure that we're aware of the requirements in our code. Um, so just making sure that we're taking a look at that and if there are any questions about what's required to just make sure that we're having that conversation, um, sooner than later. Obviously, DOT consultation is a given, um, and you, I'm not gonna repeat everything you just said, so thank you for covering that. Uh, lot line revision review, um, pretty standard, will want an updated, uh, plat with the required signature blocks, um, especially given that you've adjusted the size that will be altered, um, as part of this application. Uh, and that should be carried through on the site plan component as well, um, and throughout the entirety of the plan set, um, for circulation and parking, obvious, for all of those reasons. Um, uh, in terms of the site plan review component, um, I just wanted to point out a couple of things for the board. Um, the title sheet, uh, appears to be different. The numbers listed on the title sheet for each of the, the uses appears to be different than what's actually shown on the site plan. Um, and I think there might have been a discrepancy carried through to the shared parking analysis, which, so it's all, it's all very important to make sure that we're being consistent, and I know it's, it's changing kind of as you're even submitting this to us. So if we can just make sure we button that up, because obviously the parking counts are important, and the board will probably talk a little bit about that.
Understood.
Um, so that, that's important, um, and I won't, and we also have, uh, obviously Andy has reviewed the application for site civil purposes, and we have, um, JMC on to, uh, discuss the traffic review component, engineering review component. Um, but back to site plan, uh, which is my area, uh, I just wanted to ask the board also at this time to, um, if you have questions about the breakdown, um, uh, about the open space requirement, um, previously they were deficient. Now they're, um, you know, attesting that they're exceeding that ten percent uh, minimum requirement, um, and, and there's a pretty loose definition of what open space means in this overlay zoning. Um, and so I, I just want the board to be comfortable with what, with what it is at this point in time that the applicant is proposing as open space. You know, if, if you have concerns about what is being proposed, if you feel that it maybe isn't meeting what you'd like to see there, or if it is meeting what you like, uh, typically like to see on a site, great. But, um, this would be the time to have that discussion before they really refined their application, especially given the fact that they're reconsidering the layout of, of the property, um, you know, and looking at things like potentially losing a, a, one of your structures on the property, so, and one of your buildings. So, um, I, I just think that this is the time to kind of talk through some of that. Um, I do appreciate the, the architectural, um, the renderings I think are helpful, but obviously having them depicted in a way that's to scale. Um, I, I think, I, I know the board is gonna ask you some questions about the, the topography and the grade change on the property. Um, and I think that, uh, I'm myself personally, I was having a little bit of a hard time, um, still making the connection between this property and potential future connection to the property to the east. I know we had talked a lot about that about a year ago. Um, so maybe there, there might be some discussion about that. Um, for now though, I'm, it is on for a public hearing, so, uh, as I would recommend that the board open the public hearing, hear any comments, adjourn, and then defer action with comments. Um, and obviously, our door is always open, so if, if the opportunity is necess- you know, if you, if you need the, need to meet with staff, um, we can obviously do that again before another submission. I know that you've already been actively doing that as recent as this week, so, um, thank you.
Thanks. Kirsten, it's been, uh, go to Andy.
Sure. Um, we still have quite a few comments. They've, they've actually done a great job of, of knocking quite a bit of, a lot of them off. Um, believe it or not, this is a, a much shorter list than we had before, so they have, have done some, quite a bit of work to kind of get where they are right now. A lot of our comments are related to, they're kind of technical comments related to sewer water, um, comments. A lot, most of the stormwater comments have been addressed. Um, they're in pretty good shape there. Um, comments about the, the pump station that's proposed. Um, we're concerned about the, it's, it's getting very deep, um, and worried about the functionality of that, um, especially if they want to try to put future, um, flows into it. Um, so there's gonna be some discussion about that, how they could maybe reduce that depth. Um, I think the location, um, is a good spot. I know we kind of discussed that previously, and I think that's a good spot out of the way. Uh, but there may be some other things that can be done to make it less deep. Yeah, so, um, and then like Kristen said, we did have a meeting, um, with their engineer uh, this week to talk about, um, the, the connection and the downstream's capacity of the existing town system. Um, we had some questions, they had answers, they, we gave them a little bit more homework to do to go out and kind of check some things out. Um, we're gonna get together again to, to make sure that everything is the way that it needs to be, so.
It sounds like some good progress, though. We're more to go. Thanks, Andy. See, Kevin, you're on for JMC. Can you unshare your screen now?
Sure.
Yeah, um, good evening. So, uh, we, uh, we reviewed the parking analysis, which was already, uh, noted to be deficient. So we'll, uh, just wait for an update with that to review on the, the next time around. We also didn't receive a, updated traffic study at this time, so we'll just be looking for a revised traffic study addressing some of the comments that we had previously had in the past. And we had provided some site plan comments, some of them being, uh, for the truck turning, uh, around the site. And then the other comments we think are all, uh, technical can be, uh, revised and addressed by the applicant.
All right, thanks, Kevin. As you heard in our previous, uh, application, parking is an issue. All right, let's go around the board for comments this time. I'll start. Oh, let's take the public hearing, I'm sorry. I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on Casper Kill, I mean, Casper Kill?
Oh.
Or, uh.
It's early to be having those.
It's not even eleven o'clock yet.
Anyone on Zoom wishes to comment on Casper Kill project? You can unmute yourself or raise your hand. Not seeing anyone.
Not seeing anyone. There's, and there are plenty of opportunities in the future. I move we adjourn the public hearing to, uh, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Move consecutive, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Now we're going to board, start with Nicole.
Okay, um, I, I didn't have a ton of things to say. Um, I did have a question though. I thought we talked about this last time, but forgive me if, if, um, I'm wrong. Didn't we talk about the ADA connectivity around building D one last time? I thought we did, and it, and, and there was some comments that I saw coming through that, that was still a concern, that it didn't seem. Just look at that, just look at that.
Will do.
Um, let's see, what else did I have? Uh, lighting, ultimately, take a look at that, please. Um, it looks like it exceeds over the property line.
Yes.
Um, and again, just for reference again, and I might have said, said this last time, we're really looking for full cutoff. Um, we're really looking for dark sky compliant, and we're really looking for between twenty-five hundred and three thousand, although three thousand tends to be kind of the okay point. So, but other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Sharon, I think.
Yeah.
Steve?
No.
Michael, I think.
Just a couple of questions, mostly because I'm new.
Yeah, for sure.
For, you know, hearing thirty thousand square feet and seeing the box on the, on the plans is all well and good. Do we have a basis for comparison? Like what existing grocery store is that size in the area? Just, just so I have an idea.
I'm not sure they're ready, really, ready to share the, the grocery store name.
No, but you're asking, you're, you're asking for comparables, right?
Yeah, like, you know, what? Similar to a ShopRite or something.
The ShopRite at Hudson Heritage is probably close to this, this size.
I think it's much bigger.
I think that one is a little bigger, actually.
ShopRite over nine, um.
Closer to sixty, isn't it?
Probably more like Stop and Shop here, is that around?
Stop and Shop.
Stop and Shop here, Forty-Four Plaza, isn't that, isn't that somewhere around thirty thousand?
Could be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stop and Shop, I think.
That's a good-sized store.
It's a big store. I think it's much bigger than.
Too big for.
But again, Mike, with, with they were saying that they might be reducing that.
Right, to meet the parking requirement.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was too big for a Trader Joe's, that's all we knew.
Now, another, another question I had. By, so to meet the open space requirement, they are transferring existing open space from the golf course, that's all, that's next door onto the site.
Right.
And that's meeting their open space requirement.
Right, yeah, they, they own both, both, uh, parcels.
Right, but they're not, they're not creating more open space. They're just, this is a paper transfer of open space.
Yes, but they're also doing like the pocket little, um.
We would also just, so you know, Michael, in order for the transferred property from the golf course into this, uh, project to be useful for this project, it requires a grade change the other way. We have to, ooh, I'm sorry, uh, we have to. We have to build a retaining wall on the golf course property to lift the land that's being transferred so that it's useful for open space purpose to people in this development here. So that everybody knows, the portion that's being transferred is, the golf course property is about 345 acres. The golf course proper, where you play golf, is a sprawling kind of golf course, but it only takes up about 140 acres. So there's scads of excess land on the golf course that is in fact presently vacant, but has never had to be designated as, as some kind of open space. It just is, it's there. So this would not affect the utility of the golf course. Meaning we, we took great pain to not alter the, the golf playing area of the golf course or the card paths or the access. The only people who'll be able to be inconvenienced a bit are the guys that work for our golf course who mow grass, you know, so their maintenance area is very close by to this. So I hope that answers the question.
That, that does. I just wanted to...
And you were, you're not here with the tiered land down so people can, you know, enjoy and view, view down at the golf course.
Right. Now, comments on, on this? I saw that you have separate, a separate pocket park and then a separate outdoor eating area. Is there, I would like to see something like that combined. It'd be very pleasant to be able to sit and eat outside in, in effect, what's a park, right? And that's, I don't know if that would meet your open space requirements for that or if that changes anything. But I, I just looking at this, the two things seem very separate, and I don't know why they couldn't be one, if that makes sense.
We'll take a look.
Take a look.
So a lot of this was a, a, part of a go around amongst us and the town and the county. So I frankly am going to have to rack my brain to recall some of the origins of it. But, but it came out of those discussions and the specific recreational style use of A versus B. I'm going to have to check my memory on that.
I mean, and...
I mean, there is, there is some, you know, outdoor dining sometimes associated just with a restaurant and then...
Right, my, my comment might be resolved with putting planters around the outdoor eating area, right? I, I'm just saying it might be something that's very easy to do.
Okay.
And I like to see a separation between the parking lot and where people are eating. Mostly because if I'm eating there, I don't want to.
Let's make it, okay.
Yeah, some screening, some land, when you get some landscape discussion.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I, we didn't include our landscaping scheme in here. So I think a lot of those concerns are probably already met, but it's a good point.
Right. And then last, my last note. I would like, I'm not really certain. So I brought this up in our, in our private meeting, but the... Is there a place to put either a turning lane or a slowdown lane? Or maybe move back the pedestrian crosswalk from Route 9? Mostly because if you drive on Route 9, you know how fast it can be. And according to the renderings and looking at this, it's, the crosswalk is right at Route 9. So someone doing the speed limit of 45 miles per hour, turning into, that is, I think, possibly dangerous. But...
So we don't have any extra land to allow for a slowdown lane? But that would be a consideration of state DOT and our interactions with them. I mean, it's part of the record and it will definitely be discussed.
Any way to move, move the crosswalk away from Route 9? So at least people turning have more than a split second to...
We'll take a look at that. You mean the crosswalk on the entry road?
On the two entry roads.
So as you turn in, you, okay?
Immediately, the first thing is in the crosswalk with possibly someone walking in.
Yeah, I think that would be something that Colliers should address.
Yeah, our traffic. And you're also bound by DOT standards, so whatever they say kind of goes, yeah.
Right, but that's...
Doesn't hurt to ask the question.
Yep.
No, and our traffic control, Michael is on...
It's good to think of these things, but the DOT has the final say on these intersections.
Thank you.
I'm a state owned roads.
If I may, because just following up on the open space. So where that area has increased in size at half an acre to sort of increase the property size in order to achieve the greater percentage, it's kind of like nothing's... I mean, I mean this as professionally as possible. It's almost like nothing's changed because you're just increasing the number in order to get a greater percentage. So I want to understand now more than ever, what does that extra area of land? What is the intent of it, though? What, I know we talked about a sitting wall and, and just understanding what that looks like at that part of the property, I think is still a challenge for the board and myself. And I think, similar to the rendering you kind of provided, or, you know, just trying to understand what does that look like? And, and to the point of like an outdoor area, like is it stepped? You know, like I lived in the Troy area and there's a waterfront and there's steps, but it's kind of grassed also and it's tiered and you can stop and have lunch, but there's a view and, you know, whatever, but I...
I think, Kristen, your kind offer from a few minutes ago of us having a further meeting, I think that would be a very good place for us to shoot around with the possible appearance. The appearances, we tried to soften the, the, the number of walls, frankly, and level out the area to a larger extent so it's more usable. But what, any kind of improvements or what the landscaping looks like and so forth, we're all, we can discuss what is optimal.
Yeah, as, as Kristen said, it's just hard to understand what's back there with the different topography. It's a little unusual. As you take that hill down and what happens there. Great, thanks. Anything, Sid?
The depiction what you, what you showed is really good. But I did not see, because you, you did mention that you were struggling with those 25 parking lots, right? So if, is the intention to get rid of the marketplace?
Do you mean the supermarket?
Yes, the supermarket.
No, no, that was part of, one of our delays here was discussions with supermarket, who themselves is doing their own market studies and so forth, about this optimal size of this store. And as we mentioned here, shrinking it to an extent is under active discussion. It is not going to disappear, but it could get marginally, and I mean very marginally smaller, maybe by 5,000 square feet or something to that effect.
There was no mention about space for the shopping carts. Maybe very minor, but still I want to just bring up this point.
They're there, there are cart corrals.
Cart corrals, yeah.
Okay, maybe I'm a bit of this, but that's all I had, thank you.
Great, thanks, Sid. Peter?
I know I asked you this question before about the, the environmental assessment. An environmental site assessment phase one, you did complete one.
We did indeed, and I thought we submitted, have we not submitted that?
Yes, we submitted it.
Yeah, I think we have a copy. Yep.
You think we do? Do we have one?
Uh, let me just double check.
And have you reviewed it?
Yes, we did review it. If we got it, we reviewed it.
Anything, anything of concern there?
We had no comments on it.
I'm glad you're being proactive with regard to the parking. It's a, the commercial space is an easy target and it's probably the right way to go. Your snow storage that you're showing here along Route 9 is not going to be adequate. I mean, based on the side of the parking lot, just for the grocery store alone, you would need a sherpa to get to the top of the snow pile there. So I would suggest that you look at, at, at a proposal to remove the snow when necessary. Instead of, if you don't have the space, and it appears that you don't have the space for snow storage, that you provide us with something for the plan, that you will agree to have the snow removed, you know.
If we did. Yeah, I think we may already have that note on the file, but if not, we'll certainly have it. Yep.
I feel a lot more comfortable now with, I was very concerned about the queuing, but I think the, your traffic flow now is, is much improved than it was when you originally proposed it. And finally, I have a question for the town, for the board attorney. And that is, should we be concerned at all about discussions between the adjacent property owner with regard to parking for the supermarket? Or should we just let them, let that play out?
As far as this board is concerned, I would consider that to be a neighbor dispute that the board does not need to get involved in.
Okay. Thank you. Finally, I would say that your company has a reputation for building really high quality projects. And I think, you know, we're really, I'm, I'm sure that you're going to do a great job here.
Thank you, very nice, Pete.
Yep, I'll, I'll second that with, thanks, Peter. I also have a question on the future connection that Kristen mentioned, so how that might play out with the topography there. And... I like the looks of the, some of the buildings there that help. The only thing I did notice of the southern elevations on four and, I think it's five and six, do not have any windows at all, so I'm not sure if that's going to be acceptable for the board or not. I'll have to take a look at that in face to 4DR, I guess. So maybe it's just back up against the, depending how the...
Yeah, keep in mind, we, we don't permit windowless facilities.
Uh, let's see. And I, I'd encourage you to look into a crosswalk across Route 9 there as well for, for N2 Road. I think that's, there's one at the other end, just the Casper Kill there.
Yes.
And I think one here would serve, serve it as well. There's three restaurants on the other side. I can see workers wanting to get across the street to the lunch or whatever, and back and forth.
So, just add one thing on there to the, I know you're talking about where to maybe reduce some building size. I mean, I, I think from the beginning that the fast food restaurant, in particular the drive-through, was not, you know, our favorite part of the project from a staff standpoint. And I know when we talked about the design with the county, that was also a part of their comments. So, you know, to the degree that you're weighing different alternatives, I mean, I think, you know, losing the drive-through, it's pretty tight the way it's designed now. Losing the drive-through or losing that fast food might not be the worst thing, but obviously we'll have further conversations about it.
Shouldn't be too hard to swallow.
Shouldn't be too hard to swallow.
All right.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in the writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following, one through 11.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Move to consecutive, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes seven zero. Thanks again for coming through. Lot of great updates. We look forward to continuing. Next up is Spark Car Wash. Coming back in. No parking issues that you guys had, maybe there's some other issues. All right, welcome back.
Good evening, board members. Again, Jen Porter from CSG Law. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Spark Car Wash LLC. We previously appeared in front of this board back in April. Since that time, there have been several iterations of our plan designed really to respond to a number of the comments that we received early on, feedback from the board, public comment as well. Specifically tonight, we intend to call just a couple of, of our consultants. Since this is really our first public hearing, we wanted to give a more detailed overview of our application while at the same time wanting to keep this brief because we recognize obviously the long agenda that the board has this evening. So we are going to have Lindsay McQuade from Bowler Engineering, our project site engineer, just walk you through the site plan, but with an eye towards specifically the changes that have been made since we last appeared, since it has been five months. Then we'll have Oliver Young, our project architect, who did not appear at the last meeting, specifically walk you through the building architecture, especially since a, a number of comments related specifically to the building design and signage. And so he'll be touching upon those specific issues as well. And then lastly, we'll have Nick Tortorella from Stonefield, who is our traffic engineer, just talk about specifically some of the traffic issues associated with the site that have been identified in some of the reports. He can give an update in terms of where we stand with DOT, with Duchess County, and address some of the comments just with respect to queuing, as well as some of the intersection studies that were performed and, and analysis, really designed to respond to the comments that we've received so far. We do have a Spark representative here as well. Last time we did walk the board through the operations aspects, the operational aspects of the use. So we won't do that again, but to the extent that the board has any questions regarding that, we're happy to address them in, you know, in our discussion this evening. We did receive all the comment letters and we'll address certain things as we go and then obviously, you know, look forward to the dialogue afterward with the board. So, Ms. McQuade?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. As Ms. Porter mentioned, my name is Lindsay McQuade. I am a senior project manager with Bowler, where I have worked for the past 11 years. We are representing Spark as the civil site engineers, and I personally oversaw the design of this site. While I've not personally testified in front of this board, many of my colleagues have. In fact, we did the Walgreens across the street from this property many years ago. I'm also personally excited to be in front of the board. My mom actually grew up in the area, so it's nice to be amongst an area where I visited a lot growing up and see a lot of the changes that have taken place over the past couple of years.
Do you want to say hi, Mom?
Hi, Mom. Like Ms. Porter said, we're going to focus on some of the operations as well as the changes that have been made in connection with communicating with the members, the professionals of the town to address some of the comments over the past couple of months. We previously, uh, you know what, sorry, just realized I didn't show the screen.
There we go.
So our first exhibit is an aerial exhibit. At the prior hearing, we did give an overview of the site. So just to keep it short and sweet and familiarize you with the property again. The property is outlined in yellow here. The address is 826 Duchess Turnpike. It's located at the corner of Duchess Turnpike Route 44 and DeGarmo Road, County Route 43. The site is approximately 1.3 acres and it is located in the Highway Business District. Zooming in, the site is adjacent to residential to the north and the east, as well as directly adjacent to Duncan and Mobile to the south and the Walgreens I previously mentioned and the Vera Pizzeria to the west. The site is currently occupied by Purple Parlor Car Wash. This is an older style self-service car wash with six washing stations and 15 vacuum stations. Each vacuum station today contains its own producer, which is very different than how Spark will proceed. A producer is essentially the electronics that power the vacuums, generate the noise. In the Purple Parlor Car Wash, all of their vacuums are located to the rear of the site adjacent to the residence to the east. And we will go over that in more detail when we go through the proposed conditions, how the Spark Car Wash will differ regarding the producers. The existing car wash also has two full movement driveways, one off of Duchess Turnpike and one off of DeGarmo, and it's also a 24-hour operating facility. Moving on to our next exhibit, which is a colorized version of the site plan that was submitted to the town. As you can see, we are proposing the Spark Car Wash, which is a new style automated car wash, marrying modern technology and chemicals with a membership subscription model. The site was specifically designed to have the least impact to the residences across DeGarmo as well as to the east. By doing this, we pulled the building as far south and west as we could to pull... By doing this, we pulled the building as far south and west as we could to pull the building and the operations as close to the commercial and highway facilities. Also, with the direction of the tunnel facing towards Duchess Turnpike, any of the operational noise within the tunnel will be directed towards the Turnpike rather than towards the residences. Highlighting some of the operations that we previously mentioned, the Spark Car Wash will be open from eight to eight, which is a significant reduction compared to the twenty-four-hour facility that Purple Parlor Car Wash currently has. Deliveries will be twice per month via a Sprinter van that will come before the store opens, and trash pickup will be once per week via a private hauler, which will also happen before opening. One of the major changes we made since last meeting with the board was actually pulling the trash enclosure further south into the site to basically draw it away from DeGarmo and the residences across DeGarmo. That was direct feedback and coordination that we had with the professionals. We also enhanced the landscaping to further buffer it from DeGarmo, as well as are now providing a self-closing gate for the trash enclosure. The site will be equipped with twenty-four vacuum spaces. This includes one ADA compliance space, as well as three employee spaces. The tunnel will be accessed via two queue lanes that will have a twenty-car stacking. And another major change that we've made since the prior meeting with the board was we previously had a producer, which I mentioned.
Thank you.
Bless you. Which I mentioned earlier, which was further east within the site, and we actually, at the recommendation of the board, were able to reconfigure some of the parking and pull that producer further west to draw it away from the residence to the east. As I mentioned, the producers are the electrical equipment which power the vacuums. For Purple Parlor Car Wash, at each vacuum station, there's currently a producer. For Spark Car Wash, they only require one producer per row of parking. So we are significantly reducing the number of producers on-site to two. Currently, the producers all meet federal regulations for noise. However, at the recommendation of some of the letters we received, we are also providing an enclosure to further reduce any noise that is generated by those producers. As I mentioned, for the Purple Parlor Car Wash, they have an existing full-access driveway along Duchess Turnpike. We are proposing to close that and make that an emergency entrance only. We have worked with Mr. Mills to address the fire department's comments, and from direct feedback from him, we have updated the emergency access to provide papers, as well as a radio-controlled crash-rated gate, so that at, if, in the event of an emergency, they can call ahead and that gate will be open so they can easily access into the site. At this time, we don't have any outstanding comments from the fire department as of the letters we received Tuesday, or Monday. Also, an update from the prior hearing, we previously had a shared driveway. In communication and coordination with the town professionals, we decided to split the driveways to have an ingress-only off of DeGarmo and an egress-only off of DeGarmo. This helps eliminate some of the concerns regarding conflict points of cars entering and exiting. Also, at the recommendation of the board, we have since provided a five-foot-wide sidewalk along both property frontages of Duchess and DeGarmo. The site will also be updated to be ADA compliant. Highlighting regarding the utilities, gas, water, electric, telecom will all be updated with new connections to the proposed building. The big difference is, which is part of the new age car wash that Spark is proposing here, is they will be removing the septic that currently exists on-site and replacing it with a pump station to ultimately discharge into the public system. They're also proposing an oil-water separator and a reclamation system for the water that's used within the tunnel to make sure that they're using the most efficient water resources, as well as cleaning the water before it leaves the site. On-site today, there also is no stormwater management. We are proposing two infiltration basins that are designed to meet the state stormwater management code. The site is also proposing several LED site area lights that are dark-skry compliant. Pulling up our next exhibit, which is an after-hours lighting exhibit, in conjunction with feedback we received and communication we've had with the town, Spark has agreed to reduce the hours of some of the lighting on-site to only when the store is open. So the vacuum lights, the lighting that is affixed to the vacuums, as well as the strip lighting at the exit and the entrance of the tunnels, that will only be operating from eight AM to eight PM. The remaining light fixtures on-site will stay on outside of those hours of operation to assist with safety and monitoring the site. An important thing to note is, from the lighting plan that was submitted, we are seeking a variance for illumination at the property line. The location that this will remain in after-hours, if I can zoom in on the screen, will be at the DeGarmo entrance. This is essentially, in case anyone needs to access the site, we need to make sure that the driveway is lit enough for somebody to be able to maneuver it appropriately. An important, another important item to note is that for the property to the east, the, there will be no light spillage, as well as what is shown within the lighting plan and the after-hours exhibit does not model any of the existing buffering that is to remain there, so the levels will actually be reduced to zero well before they reach the property line. As well as the lighting from our site does not throw across DeGarmo to the residences. But in the after-hour exhibits, there will still be the request for a lighting variance at the DeGarmo driveway. Going back to our colorized version of the site plan, just to help view the landscaping, we are proposing thirty-six trees. This includes thirty-four evergreen and two deciduous, as well as thirty-three other plantings throughout the site, which comprises of twenty, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven shrubs, seventy-one grasses, and thirty-five perennials, bringing the total plantings on the site to three-hundred-and-sixty-nine, compared to within the disturbed limits of the Purple Parlor Car Wash today, there are no plantings. So this is a significant enhancement in the landscaping. I will move on to our next exhibit, which is a sightline exhibit representing the sightline from the residence to the east to the Spark Car Wash. From some of our communication with the town professionals, we understand that they want us to enhance the landscape buffering to the residence to the east. So since the last time we were here, we have since proposed a six-foot-high wooden fence just within our property line at the east portion of the property, as well as we have maintained all but seven trees of the existing buffering from the east, and of those seven, three are actually dead that will be removed. We have added evergreen trees and have agreed to install them at a height of fourteen feet, so they will be significantly taller than what was previously proposed, as well as there's an additional fence at the top of the wall, which will be four foot board-on-board. So this sightline emphasizes the addition of the fencing, as well as the larger trees, as you can see in green, are install height, and in gray in the background is what is expected to be ten-year growth maturity. This exhibit essentially shows that the existing buffering plus the new buffering and fence would eliminate the visibility and enhance the, the look from the residential Similarly, we prepared a sightline exhibit BB from the residence across DeGarmo to the Spark Car Wash. Similarly, from feedback from the town, we do, we are proposing a small berm within the landscape island adjacent to DeGarmo on our site, as well as evergreen trees and Six evergreen trees and forty-five shrubs, and the install height would be about six to eight feet in this area. For this particular cross-section, this is a vast improvement compared to the existing, where the disturbance, it goes much closer to DeGarmo as well as the residences, where we're pulling that back and able to provide some berming, as well as landscape buffering to the residences across DeGarmo.
Just a quick question that's hard to read the fine print there. Is that ten-year growth or something?
Yes, ten-year. So green is install height, gray in the background is anticipated ten-year growth.
Thanks.
In conclusion, Spark is proposing to upgrade the existing car wash to a modern and more efficient car wash with limited hours of operation, a reduction in the number of producers, as well as having them enclosed to further reduce the noise anticipated, newer and more infi, more environmentally friendly operations, utility upgrades via the sanitary pump system, reclamation system, oil-water separator, and on-site basins, pulling improvements away from the residences to allow for the berming and landscaping you see for the properties across from DeGarmo, proposing three-hundred-and-sixty-nine total plantings across the site, making ADA upgrades, as well as providing sidewalk along both property frontages. I will now pass it back to Ms. Porter.
All right. Thanks for that overview.
So I don't know if the board had any questions for Ms. McQuade, or we can simply go next to our architect.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've answered a lot of some of our questions, with the noise analysis and the landscaping, so.
Great. Thank you.
There is a third microphone, if you need to have three of you up there.
Hopefully, it won't be necessary, just trying to learn how to operate the program, as embarrassing as that sounds. Good evening, everyone. My name's Oliver Young. I'm a principal at GKNA Architects based out of New Jersey. Our firm is responsible for the design of this Spark Car Wash. I've pulled up the first page of a rendering package we produced for this. However, before I jump right into the building elevations, I'm gonna touch very briefly upon the floor plan without pulling it up unless the board feels their need. The floor area is shown on the site plan prepared by Lindsay's firm. It's a four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot footprint. Overall, it's thirty-six foot wide by one-hundred-and-thirty-nine feet. However, it's not one solid rectangle. It's actually two shifted rectangles, one of them being twenty-one by one-thirty-five, the other one being fifteen by one-thirty-five, and they're offset by just over three and a half feet. The twenty-one-foot-wide portion, which is on the south side of the building, that's the tunnel, and at the narrower portion, the fifteen-foot-wide portion, is on the north side of the building, facing the vacuum spaces and facing DeGarmo. That's all the support for the building. Starting on the east side, closest towards the tunnel entrance, is the office, followed by employee bathroom, employee break room, storage closet, equipment room, then ending up with the electrical room, farthest to the west by the tunnel exit. And for reference, as Ms. McQuade stated, the tunnel exit faces Duchess Turnpike, and the building itself sits approximately perpendicular to Duchess Turnpike. Now I will jump to the elevations. First, I'll discuss massing before I get into the materials. On the south side of the building is south elevation, which faces the adjacent Dunkin' Donuts and fueling operation. That parapet tops off at eighteen feet. On the north side, it tops off at eighteen foot eight inches, with one section that bumps up to twenty-two feet two inches. And for reference, the north elevation is at the top of the page here. The south elevation is at the bottom of the page, and you'll see the glazing there and the tunnel. The step-up from eighteen to eighteen foot eight occurs on the short side of the building, which are the east and the west sides of the building. And then additionally, as everybody knows by now, we have what we call a blade-tower element on the building. We see that as the beacon, the eye catcher, and obviously, it presents the opportunity for signage. This blade element is three foot wide by twelve and a half foot long, and it tops off at thirty-three feet. And I will point out that you see it on the west elevation, which we call the front elevation of the building, facing Duchess Turnpike. That's elevation number two. However, if you look at the north elevation, you'll see that that blade element doesn't sit right at the end of that elevation. It's set back a little, so it's not right on, right at the edge of the building, which is closest to the street frontage. In terms of colors and materials, I'm just gonna flip to the next page in our rendering presentation. We have four before and after renderings. This is a, a view of a drone shot taken earlier this year, aerial, facing the intersection of Duchess and DeGarmo, so it's looking towards the south, west, south, southeast, I believe. I could be wrong with the directions.
Yep.
And then I'll flip to the next, where we've taken this photograph and we've rendered in the proposed development accurately, per the site plan, per the landscaping, per the vacuum spaces, and per the building itself. Our design, it's sleek, and we feel it's modern. There's a tasteful, yet catchy, use of color. There's two prevalent materials on this building, the first one being an EPAS system in both a blue, a white, and then a gray corrugated finish meant to mimic corrugated metal. And then the second material we have on the building is a white exterior porcelain tile. We also have an orange accent band. We call it the Spark Orange. It's present on all four sides of the building. At the tunnel entrance and the tunnel exit, as well as the office, this band morphs into a sun-shaped canopy. In other areas, that band is, for lack of a better term, flush, or close to flush with the adjacent EPAS finish. Stay with me one second. We have a second rendering view I'd like to show. It's taken from across Duchess Turnpike, looking towards the east, so the Walgreens is to our back, and this is in existing condition, showing the existing car wash operation. And then we've taken that photo and superimposed the Spark development on that. And you will see how the tower element that I previously described on the elevations, you can see how it's set back from the building and from the road. As I mentioned earlier in regards to the glazing, the only, the majority of glazing is on the south elevation for the tunnel, which doesn't face the road. That tunnel faces the adjacent Dunkin' Donuts, and in its current condition now, with the fall weather approaching, you'll see there's not much visibility of that glazing. The other glazing we have on the building is at the office area, and then we also have one small window at the break room. So those are both on the north elevation, facing the vacuum spaces. In regards to building lighting, and I will going to jump back to the colorized elevations.
Just before you get into the lighting, is there, is there any HVAC under for this?
There's two small units. They're not, they're not rooftop package units that we're used to. They're simply condensers. They're mini-split systems, so they're very, very small, and at least one of them is located behind that taller portion of the parapet that's twenty-two foot two inches, and the second one is located above the electrical room. And we can check the height of that in terms of visibility to show.
Our code requires them to be screened to show them.
Yes, if it's not, we'll double-check the height. If it's not screened, we will provide screening for those two items. There's no other rooftop-mounted equipment, other than flues and exhaust for the heaters in the tunnel and the plumbing vents.
All right, continue.
In regards to building lighting, at that blade element, we have a vertical LED. You'll see it in white on the north elevation. It's approximately six inches wide. That's a white plastic acrylic covering an LED tube that goes the full height of that blade element. And then we have a smaller version of that on the west. and then we have a smaller version of that on the west elevation, directly to the left of the tunnel exit, surrounded by a gray, the gray corrugated metal. We also have some decorative round wall sconces on the north and west elevations, you'll see them as white circles, there's six of them total. Then we also do have recessed LED strip lighting at the canopies, both over the tunnel entrance, the tunnel exit, and the office, those strip lights are fully recessed, so you will not see them on the elevations, and then we have one more area on the building itself, where we have recessed LED strip. It's above the windows on the south elevation, we've recessed some LED strip lighting at the cornice level, so again, from an elevation view here, you won't see that. Transitioning from building lighting to signage, we are proposing five total signs for the building. Starting with the west elevation, which is elevation number two here, facing Duchess Turnpike, we have one Spark logo at fifteen-point-eight square feet directly over the tunnel exit, then at the blade-tower element, we have a combined Spark logo and Spark Car Wash verbiage totaling seventy-three-point-five square feet. On the north elevation, Degarmo Road, we have a smaller version of the combined Spark logo and Spark Car Wash sign, it totals forty-four-point-three square feet, and then we have an area called the Spark Park that has signage, it's eight-point-eight square feet, and I would like to touch upon the Spark Park. What that is, is that's an area where, you know, you sit in your car during the entire car wash, once you get out, you can choose to vacuum your car. This is a mat wash area, which offers mat washing for both carpeted floor mats, there's two mat washers for those, plus a wash area for those vehicles, like my own, that have rubber floor mats, you can take those out, hold them on the clips, and hose them down every day, even during the winter. There's also additional cleaning supplies there, such as spray bottles and cloths, so we've branded that area the Spark Park, and we feel, although technically that counts as a sign due to its size, it's not meant to advertise to people on the road, it's meant to advertise to members and non-members onsite, that this is an area that they can utilize, however, we're counting it as signage and including that here, which will trigger a sign variance and push us over on square footage. Moving along, we have one additional sign on the east elevation, which is the backside of the blade element, that's the same Spark logo and Spark Car Wash that you have on the west elevation, so again, it's seventy-three-point-five square feet. So, in summary, on the building signs, five total signs, two-hundred-and-fifteen-point-nine square feet. For the site, we have a monument sign, I do not have a rendering, bear with me, I might have a rendering of it, I'm not sure if it shows up in this. In this view, you can see it, it's at the corner, at the intersection of Duchess and Degarmo. It total, it's a monument sign, fifty-six-point-seven-four square feet. The sign itself is four feet four inches tall by thirteen foot two inches wide, and it sits on a three-foot-two tall base, so the overall height of the sign is seven foot six inches. I will note that the base uses the same white exterior porcelain tile that we are using on the building. There is also directional signage on the property, these signs are one-foot by three-foot, non-illuminated, and I believe they meet the conditions of the Poughkeepsie ordinance, and technically don't count as signage, we're allowed to place those, however, we will defer to the board professionals for comment. Now, in regards to what you allow for signage, per our review, the ordinance allows for one sign per frontage, and we have two frontages here, so we believe we're allowed two signs, we're proposing five signs on the building. The maximum signage area is one-hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the facade, which is whichever is smaller, our total number...
Oliver, I'm sorry to interrupt, because you're providing a lot of information, but this board doesn't make decisions, has no jurisdiction over the number or the size of the signs.
Understood.
That would be the ZBA, and this board typically does not make recommendations to the ZBA. They do, and I'm sure they will be interested in the structure of the building and the architecture in terms of materials, colors, appearance, and size of the building and the building elements.
Understood.
And lighting on the building, and that's all relevant and appropriate, thank you very much for the information, but the signage details will be, will be, this board won't have any review of it.
We did have a question about that, only because it is a recommendation specifically in connection with Duchess County's two-thirty-nine review, so we weren't sure to what extent that a determination needed to be made in connection with the SEACR review by this board as it relates specifically to a willingness to override certain comments, so that, that's really where some of this is just coming from, so, because to the extent that the board was weighing in, but if, if this board essentially defers entirely to zoning board on that issue, that's obviously perfectly fine, we more or less just wanted to bring it up, only because it was on that list of items specifically that was raised in the county report, that they were opposed to the grant of any relief, and so, we wanted to explain it as it relates specifically to the overall look and, and, you know, feel of the building.
Yeah, it's good to see the overview of it, so we, so we get an idea.
Right, that's correct.
But they have the final say.
A little too much detail, my apologies, however, the intent was, the focus of the signage for us is that blade-tower element, which we understand, we've received strong feedback from the county on the size of those signs.
Our zoning department also flagged that, it's not permitted, just so, so, you know, so that'll be, you know, something that would have to go to the ZBA for variance, but, you know.
Right, that sign is deemed a roof sign, which are not allowed in any of the...
Can you, Lisa, can you speak up a little?
Go ahead, I got, I just, I raised the volume a little bit for you, hopefully that'll be better. Can you try again?
Sure, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, the blade sign is what the town considers to be a roof sign, which is prohibited in all districts, and so you would definitely need a variance from the ZBA, and in my history with the ZBA, they've never granted such a variance, so I think that you have just an uphill battle at best, to keep the blade sign.
Fair enough, but well, let's not, you know, let's not spend more time on that than we need to tonight, because again, that'll be...
Not us.
Yeah, I had a previous car wash, was trying to do something similar, and they wound up lowering it down to be kind of blend in more with the building.
Also, just in regard to your concern, it's an appropriate concern of what will happen, just in terms of procedure, and when that question of the county's recommendation will be dealt with, procedurally, after this board, this board needs to complete SEACR, and then typically, it will go, we go to the ZBA for any required variances, and would then return back to this board for final consideration before any, before any decision subject to the county's, any, if there's a condition recommendation with, by the county, it wouldn't be dealt with until that later stage.
Great.
Covered everything I'd like to cover, if there's anything additional you need to touch upon.
Yeah, nice, nice detail over, I like the renderings that you've done, that's, that's very helpful, you can see the foliage and the screening to the neighbors and such.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have one more individual, our traffic engineer, who will, again, briefly describe some of the things that have been done since our last appearance back in April, in terms of working with the town, as well as the county and DOT, in connection with access, parking, queuing, all of those things.
Yeah, so, good evening, chairman, members of the board, my name's Nicholas Torella, spelled T-O-R-T-O-R-E-L-L-A. I'm a traffic and transportation engineering project manager with Stonefield Engineering and Design, serving as the traffic engineer for this project. This is my first time testifying in front of this board, but just for reference, within the last month, have provided expert traffic engineering testimony at planning board public hearings in the town of New Paltz and the village of Spring Valley. So, just to quickly summarize Ms. McQuade's earlier testimony, the proposed development would raise the existing purple parlor car wash at the southeast corner of the intersection between Duchess Turnpike, designated as US Route forty-four, and Degarmo Road, designated as County Route forty-three, to construct a four-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot modern, state-of-the-art automated car wash with one wash tunnel, basically across the street from the Walgreens, and just north of the combination Mobile and Dunkin' Donuts development. So, my firm, Stonefield, prepared a traffic study for this project, and that was submitted to and reviewed by the board's traffic consultant, JMC. We received comprehensive comments from JMC, and submitted an updated study on May twenty-third addressing these comments. So, JMC reviewed that updated study, and are largely in agreement with the findings we'll be discussing today. I do want to note that they issued a few additional comments on June tenth and September sixth, which we'll discuss today, and are actively working to address these as part of our next submission. So, throughout this process, and after our last meeting with the board, we've become sensitive to the town and local residents' concerns regarding traffic conditions in the area, so in consultation with JMC, we expanded the traffic analysis study area to assess our project's potential impacts along the entire Duchess Turnpike corridor, not just the signalized intersection of Duchess Turnpike and Degarmo Road, that's directly adjacent to our site. So, to the south, we analyzed the intersection of Duchess Turnpike and Cherry Hill Drive, which is located adjacent to the Adams Fair Care Farm and the Arlington Square Retail Development, where we've kind of observed some somewhat significant southbound queuing on Duchess Turnpike that extends north towards our site, and then north of the site, we've analyzed the intersection of Duchess Turnpike and Victory Lane and Barnes Drive, which serves as the site access for the Poughkeepsie Industrial Center, as well as the signalized intersection of Duchess Turnpike and Eastdale Avenue, which serves as the site access for the newly constructed Eastdale Village mixed-use development. So, as shown on the exhibit, both of the, or all of these intersections, excuse me, are located more than two-thousand feet away from our site, and they do not operate on a coordinated signal system along the roadway, and I point this out because it means that we typically would not analyze these intersections as part of a standard traffic study, but again, you know, we wanted to help address traffic concerns in the area by expanding our study network. So, we prepared the detailed capacity analyses to include vehicle trips generated not only by our proposed development, but also by the remaining approved components of the Eastdale Village Development that are not yet operational, and taking no credits for pass-by trips on the adjacent roadways, nor for the existing traffic generated by the purple parlor car wash, the analysis shows that the study intersections on Duchess Turnpike operate generally consistent in the future, whether or not we redevelop the site with the Spark Car Wash, meaning that the project is really not expected to have a discernible impact to traffic operations along the corridor. So, we've also assessed the Duchess Turnpike and Degarmo Road intersection with respect to safety, to address comments received from the town, JMC, as well as local residents. We've observed, and we do understand, that this intersection has a higher-than-average crash rate under existing conditions, and our safety analysis shows that the most prevalent accident type at this location are rear-end collisions, which is a common trend for signalized intersections where vehicles consistently need to stop along the corridor. And so, as we'll discuss a little bit more in a minute, the project will close the site's existing driveway to Duchess Turnpike, approximately here, which is located very close to Degarmo Road, and this is going to remove the turning conflicts along the roadway, and inherently improve safety conditions for that reason along the roadway itself, and also at the adjacent intersection. So, with this fact alone, we can conclude that the project, the vehicle trips generated by our project are not expected to exacerbate existing safety concerns at the intersection, but again, to address local concerns, and in an effort to improve the existing safety constraints, we are actively working with the State Department of Transportation as part of the highway work permit process, to potentially implement traffic safety improvement measures at the intersection. So, we've suggested the installation of high-visibility backplates on the existing traffic signal assemblies, as well as the installation of advanced traffic signal warning signage on the intersection approaches, to notify drivers that they're approaching a location where they may need to stop. So, we'll provide an update to this board and the town, once we receive feedback from the state, on the safety improvements we identified as part of our updated Stage Two submission, which went in a little less than a month ago. And then, to address some additional comments that we received from the town and the Duchess County Planning Department, we're also actively working with the state DOT to potentially implement a new pedestrian crossing on Duchess Turnpike, to provide a connection to the existing sidewalk that fronts Walgreens. I do want to note that the State Department of Transportation confirmed that they do not control the requisite property on the west side of the roadway that we would need to make a connection to that sidewalk that fronts Walgreens, not through an existing easement, nor a previously approved land donation. So, the applicant is willing and able to provide this new pedestrian crossing, but we need the state DOT to work with us on acquiring the necessary property rights. So, we are actively coordinating with the state on this land acquisition item, and we'll update the board when we hear back to provide some clarity on the path forward for providing the new crosswalk. Just want to go back to the site plan quickly. So, again, you know, currently, access is provided by one full-movement driveway approximately here on Duchess Turnpike, and one full-movement driveway in this location to Degarmo Road, and as part of the project, as I stated earlier, we will be closing the existing Duchess Turnpike driveway, reconstructing it with mounting curb, and designate it for emergency vehicle access only. In addition, we'll also be splitting the existing Degarmo Road access into separate ingress and egress driveways, and this will improve onsite traffic circulation. And I do want to just tie it back to the analysis for one quick second, those do indicate that the turning movements at both of the site driveways are projected to operate at Level of Service C or better, which just is an industry-acceptable operating condition. So, you know, a critical element is that we're aware and have observed that westbound queues on Degarmo Road extend back from Duchess Turnpike towards our site driveways, and occasionally during the peak period, could even reach the location of our proposed egress driveway. We've received public comments on this application stating the same. So, sensitive to those concerns, we conducted a detailed queuing analysis in consultation with JMC and the State Department of Transportation, which shows that the project would not have a significant impact to the queuing conditions on Degarmo Road, and for the most part, even during peak periods, the worst-case queues would not extend far enough back from Duchess Turnpike to reach our site driveways. In the sporadic instances that these peak queues do reach the proposed location for our driveway, we've observed that the significant majority of these queues have been processed through the intersection in their entirety during one signal cycle, meaning that there are no residual queues remaining on Degarmo Road after its green phase turns red. This provides ample opportunity for vehicles exiting our site, as well as the residential driveways on the north side of Degarmo Road, to turn towards Duchess Turnpike when the signal cycle changes and the queues have dissipated. I also want to note that we plan to work with the Duchess County DPW as part of their upcoming review of our application, to potentially implement do-not-block-the-box striping within the eastbound travel lane only on Degarmo Road, right in front of our egress driveway. We would also propose to install onsite do-not-block-the-box signage facing our exiting vehicles, and the purpose of this improvement is not for the general traffic on Degarmo Road to keep the intersection clear, but rather for vehicles exiting our site to indicate to them that they cannot turn towards Duchess Turnpike if there's a chance that their vehicle could block the eastbound traffic flow, and this is in an effort to maintain continuous flow in the eastbound direction, so that there's no impact to the traffic signal operations at Duchess Turnpike. I also want to point out that our team has designed the site specifically with the Degarmo Road queuing conditions in mind, so even if vehicles exiting our site here needed to wait one to two complete signal cycles to exit the site, which again, we do not expect, but in theory, in rare instances in the future, that could happen, we've provided enough onsite staging space between the wash tunnel exit here and the egress driveway here, for at least fifteen exiting cars to queue onsite, without impacting the wash tunnel operations, onsite circulation, or the inbound screening gates. So, again, we're expecting on average, less than one car per minute to exit our site, so there's more than enough room within the site itself to accommodate the peak Spark operations during the peak Degarmo Road queuing operations, or queuing conditions, rather, with no impact to the traffic flow on Degarmo Road. We've also received comments from the town, Duchess County DPW, and NISTOT identifying concerns related to vehicles queuing on the inbound driveway, and that queue extending back to Degarmo Road and potentially affecting traffic flow there. So, the site provides twenty total onsite stacking spaces in the ingress lane, which is more than double the eight stacking spaces that are required by the town's zoning ordinance for a car wash with one wash bay. So, these twenty total onsite spaces are provided in two separate ingress lanes for the modern, state-of-the-art car wash, and sixty percent of Spark customers are expected to be members, and would use this interior lane here that's designated for members only to access the car wash. They are processed through the screening gates using a license plate recognition software, which functions similarly to like an EZ Pass gate, if you can visualize that, and results in the transaction times through the gate for members ranging from like ten to fifteen seconds. The second ingress lane showed in the outer area here is for non-members. who would have to purchase an individual car wash with the help of a dedicated customer service attendant at the gate. And even without the license plate recognition, those transaction times range from only 35 to 50 seconds. So considering the higher, higher range of transaction times for both lanes, these screening gates can process over 300 vehicles inbound in a single hour. And to reiterate, we're expecting approximately 47 total vehicles to enter the site during the single highest peak hour, meaning that we really just don't believe at all that there's a potential for a queue to occur. Furthermore, the tunnel itself has a capacity for six vehicles at any given time, and it takes on average between two and two-and-a-half minutes for a vehicle to complete the entire car wash operation, including the drying process, which means that a vehicle in theory could exit the tunnel every 20 to 25 seconds if it was to be used consistently at its peak level. I do want to point out that if needed during the peak period, Spark has the ability to actually increase the speed of that wash tunnel so that the entire operation takes less than two minutes with no impact to the quality of the car wash itself. This fact, like combined with the processing capacity of the inbound screening gate, means that the 20 total onsite stacking spaces are really more than sufficient to accommodate even the peak queues that could occur on the ingress driveway without any part of that queue extending back to Degarmo Road. But again, you know, we are sensitive to the concerns from town, county, NYSDOT, local residents about that queue impacting Degarmo Road. So we took it one step further and conducted detailed queuing observations at an existing Spark facility in Sicklerville, New Jersey at 586 Cross Keys Road. I'm going to pull up one more exhibit here. These are drone aerial images that were taken during our observations at the Sicklerville facility, which I just do want to note also uses a similar membership subscription model. And as you can see in the lower left-hand corner here, the maximum queue that we observed at any given time during the peak Friday and peak Saturday observation periods was five total vehicles in the non-members lane that occurred at 4:27. And as you can see in the lower right-hand corner, after only three minutes at 4:30 PM, that queue had been reduced to only two total vehicles in the non-members lane. And just overall throughout the two Friday and Saturday study periods, we observed queues of generally no more than two vehicles in the members' lane and no more than three total vehicles in the non-members lane. So just circling that back to the current application, the proposed queuing space in the ingress driveway for both members and non-members would be more than sufficient to accommodate even the peak queues that were observed at the Sicklerville study site. And really, there's, again, just no potential based on this data that those queues would extend anywhere back close to Degarmo Road. So just to close very quickly, the project is closing an existing driveway on Duchess Turnpike. It's located very close to the Degarmo Road traffic signal, which will remove the turning conflicts on the state roadway and inherently improve traffic safety conditions, not only on the state highway, but at the intersection itself. We are also working with the State DOT to potentially implement project-sponsored safety improvements at this location in an effort to enhance existing accident trends that have been observed over the years. We're also working with the State DOT to potentially implement the new pedestrian crossing on Duchess Turnpike. And we'll keep the board updated when we hear back from them on acquiring the necessary property rights. The traffic capacity analyses do indicate that the project is not expected to significantly impact traffic operations at our four study intersections during either peak hour on Duchess Turnpike. And lastly, the site is designed to more than accommodate the peak queues that could occur from vehicles entering the car wash with no indication from any existing Spark facility or data analysis that that queue would extend anywhere near Degarmo Road or affect traffic operations on the adjacent roadway. So with that, thank you for the time and open it up to questions if you have any.
Thanks for those detail overview. Eric?
Sure. Well, I'm not going to add too much to that. You have a lot of, you have a lot of comments, but appreciate, appreciate the update. That's very helpful. And we look forward to staff and our consultants getting a chance to review a lot of the updates that you've just provided within your next submittal, including on the lighting and the transportation, the engineering, and the sound analysis. We'll look forward to seeing all of that and having an opportunity to review them in greater detail. That said, you correctly identified a lot of the concerns that were in the comments from staff with regard to a pedestrian connection. What question there was, we appreciate the investigation into a pedestrian crossing. That was a question for the board. Just out of curiosity, you mentioned that you were, you had reached out to DOT for assistance with acquiring the rights for access. Are you saying that for DOT, you would expect DOT to obtain those rights? Or that for DOT to help Spark or its affiliates to acquire the rights?
I can defer to the attorney there, but my understanding is we need DOT to set up the conversation with the property owner where the sidewalk is currently located, the owner of the Walgreens property, because really, it would become a public pedestrian connection. So we need the state to facilitate those conversations so that we can obtain the right to make a connection, a connection to the sidewalk, which is currently located within private property.
Right, and so the applicant is more than happy to provide this. We think it would be a valuable site amenity. Our concern is that we would get into a situation where this would be something which would be a condition of an approval or something of that nature where the adjacent property owner may be unwilling to convey those rights. But if it's being done essentially in the public interest or in connection with work that's spearheaded really by involvement with and support from DOT, that it might be better received and allow for an easier process in order to implement the legal rights associated with having that access and that crossing.
Okay.
I wonder, I wonder also if the county might play a role in assisting with that.
Which would be wonderful.
Yeah, they just hold more weight than we do.
Yeah, maybe we might, maybe we could help with setting that conversation up.
It's good that you're digging into this sooner than later, so.
Yeah, and we've also had some discussions with DOT, so that might be something to pursue. And then, so I think the board has our comments and points of discussion in particular. It would be helpful to hear directly from the board about your thoughts about the desirability of that pedestrian connection, since DOT did ask us, because to be able to tell them about your take on it. And also on the county's issues, the, also the Phase 1 ESA, if that's sufficient for you or not. The board had wanted that, they provided it. Is that sufficient? Do you have any more questions? If we could put the EV charging question to bed, that would be helpful. On the building, as mentioned earlier, the board, if the board has comments with the applicant on that, they can get started on that process as well with regard to architecture and appearances, not with regard to signage. And also, I guess I'll add one more thing. Thank you for the additional screening and lighting. One, another question for the board would be for the one residence to the east, I guess. There was, the sight line issues for lighting and view would be addressed at the ground and six-foot level. That house does sit higher up. There was another project in which this board received a lot of negative feedback. It was a solar project from second-floor glare and a solar project. So I guess one question that staff would like to, would be helpful to staff is, are you concerned with the second-floor level sight line from that residence or only from the lower level?
I mean, trees grow over time, too. And they added a fence there as well. All right, we'll see what other board members think of that as well. At this point, I want to go to Andy for...
Sure.
Very comments.
Yeah, you know, we still have a number of comments. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. I think you addressed a lot of the comments just in your presentation. I appreciate, and I think the board appreciates the idea of, in terms of lighting, turning off the lights when the facility isn't open. I think it would be helpful, from a review standpoint, to have a second lighting analysis with the lights off to see the difference, what that does when you turn the lights off. I think there's also, there's, there still remain some concerns about, you know, the off-site glare from, you know, the LED lights on the buildings and particularly on the, on the vacuum, vacuum cells. But I think turning them off at night, I think that helps a lot and goes a long way. You're, you're showing the sidewalk along Degarmo and Duchess Turnpike, which is a good thing. It looks like you have some modifications possibly to the sidewalk to make that potential crossing across Duchess Turnpike work. We'll be interested to see how the grading and stuff like that works out for that. The, we still have some comments on sewer, sewer connection, but you're making progress there. Stormwater is in pretty good shape. Most of our comments have been addressed on that. One of the things that I just wanted to ask is, in previous iterations of this plan, you had proposed a connection of the roof leaders to the wastewater recycling system, and it seems to have gone away. I thought that was a really, you know, nice feature. I thought it was a good idea. Is there a reason? Can you explain why that may have gone away?
Yes, you're correct. The roof no longer is connecting to the reclamation system. Really, the size is just not, the reclamation system sizing is really more pertaining to the tunnel system as well as it really just might overrun the system compared to, you're kind of mixing clean, cleaner water with different product water.
Okay, all right.
The acidity of the rainwater itself is also not good for the system.
I see. Okay, all right. So the roof leaders are now connected to underground infiltration practices. So we're still meeting runoff reduction requirements and stormwater.
Correct.
Okay. All right, fair enough. And then I guess the only other thing that I did want to mention is that the sound analysis, we appreciate that there's only two, you know, producers that are now proposed compared to existing. But we do feel that a more detailed analysis should be conducted, you know, with existing noise levels compared to what would, and then compared to what would be produced by the site as proposed.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Andy. And Kevin, you still on for JMC? Comments, you had a few.
Yeah, yeah, it was a comprehensive presentation as well. And so with the traffic study, we are, as stated, generally in agreement with the operations that were analyzed and the impacts which were not, are not affected by the proposed development on the surrounding neighborhood from level of service standpoints. And we did review the queuing analysis that was presented, and are in agreement with the analysis that was presented. We said a small comment, just cleaning up the traffic study, kind of for the record, with some of the appendices that weren't attached in the revised submission. And then it's good to hear with the improvements that they're reaching out to NYS DOT for. Because I guess in our comment letter, we were asking them to look a little bit further into proposing and implementing some of these improvements at the signal, which were mentioned as considered. And just with the accidents, they mentioned noting that the rear-end accidents is a high, a majority of the accidents. And there is a good quantity, when you combine both the angled accidents and the left-turn accidents, those get to be another high percentage, just if those could be reviewed as well, was one of our comments. Just to see if there was any reason or a trend that caused, that's causing these types of accidents at the intersection. And I think, lastly, we had a comment which was about the sidewalk along Duchess Turnpike being proposed on the site property, which was stated that it does not need easement or land donation from NYS DOT. I guess that kind of goes along with, they're trying to get a connection on the other side of the road, and it's not in the right of way, so they'd stated that. And we would just like to see that from DOT that that's not needed because typically, if it's going to be for the public, it ends up being either an easement or land donation.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. And just a quick question on the crashes. Do you have any idea if those rear-end collisions are on Route 44 eastbound, for example? That's what...
If you could use the microphone, there's, could you use the microphone just because people on Zoom can't hear?
Northeastbound. I mean, I was picturing maybe that, you know, people are expecting to turn into Degarmo and somebody stops short to turn into the...
Like when you slow down to make the northbound right turn, right? It's made from a shared lane that shares both through and right turn traffic.
Yep.
So when the speed's reduced to make the right turn, if someone who's traveling through the intersection is not prepared to stop, that's when a rear-end accident could occur. Hence why we're suggesting to implement the traffic signal warning assemblies, as well as advanced traffic signal signage. That type of advanced warning alerts drivers that they may need to stop because there is an intersection approaching. People may be stopping to, I'm sorry, not stopping, but slowing down to make a turn.
Have you evaluated the geometry of that intersection in terms of the curb radius at that intersection as part of your study?
Not, not specifically, but I would say as making that right turn is an obtuse angle rather than an acute angle, which is generally safer for traffic.
Yeah, it seems, from experience and driving that intersection on a regular basis, the radius of that, that intersection seems probably shorter than maybe it could be. That, you know, if there's a way to maybe adjust that, that may help with that situation as well.
That may be if you're just, you're trucking.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're actively coordinating with the state as part of the highway work permit. And so if that issue is raised, you know, we can certainly discuss it with them, elongating the radius. We'd have to look at how it affects, you know, the ramifications to our property. But, you know, thank you for raising the point we certainly talked about.
I mean, it does behave a little bit different because it's angled coming in that way, and it's, so it's... But anyway, thanks. Let's move along. At this point, I move, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Second, it'll all favor.
All right.
If you could stop sharing the screen, please.
Anyone in the room here wish to comment on this project?
Well, I believe we still have a hand raised from Louis, who's been waiting patiently. So Louis, go ahead. We asked people's comments to keep them to about three minutes if possible. All right, not more than that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. First, they want to change this car wash from maybe 100 a day to maybe 1,000 a day with this due express wash. Where is the water going? Are we gonna, are we killing the environment? And when the roads freeze in winter? You know, some of that water is going to go to the main road. What about the chemicals? Do we really need this many car washes in the area?
Okay. All right, I know, I know at least for more...
I know the, there was a lot of talking before on parking problems to begin with and traffic.
Yeah, that was different projects.
Yeah, I know, but, okay.
All right, thanks for your comments. I will, I will say that they, I know they use a water reclamation system so that they, I don't know, if you have a percentage of how much water gets recycled through, so it doesn't get discharged to you.
Essentially, all of the water that's utilized within the tunnel goes into the reclamation system. And I would be guessing at a percentage right now, but maybe 50% gets reutilized at the, within the tunnel. And then the other 50 goes through the oil-water separator and ultimately discharged through the sanitary sewer system.
Yep.
Also, at the discretion of the board, we did add speed bumps, I'm sorry, towards the exit to continue to shake off any water residue from the cars that may be left over after they go through the system.
Yeah, we then had other car washes, so that would...
Yeah, and there's quite a distance, too, from the tunnel to the...
So it should be left, it should be more on the drier side by the time we get to Degarmo versus the current Purple Parlor, maybe less of a distance.
Yep.
Other comments from folks in the room or on Zoom?
Seeing none?
There's a, no, there's a hand there. If you guys wouldn't mind letting the gentleman come up to the table and having a seat. Super, thank you.
My name's Joe Kowalski. I live at 832 Duchess Turnpike. I'm on the adjacent corner to the Purple Parlor car wash. I've been there over 30 years. That, that intersection has been a cluster for over 10, 12 years. I've had five or six cars flipped over into my front yard in the last probably seven or eight years. You could probably contact the town, please. They'll tell you. They're always digging somebody out. They almost hit my house twice. And then they put Eastdale in, made it 10 times worse. You got all the apartments up on Degarmo Overlook Road. They put in 100 houses at the end of Slate Place Road, up a little ways past there. Everybody's building, building, building. They're still building more at Eastdale. Everybody's building, building, building. They're still building more at Eastdale. My mom passed away like eight years ago. She lived with me because she was disabled. Twelve, fourteen years ago, she couldn't get out of the driveway with her car because the traffic was so bad. I asked some friends of mine with the town highway if they could give me a sign at my driveway to say, "Do not block driveway," because they forever park right in front of my driveway when they're waiting for that light, and I can't get out. Of course, nobody, they told me, "You're on, you can't, we can't do it because we're town, that's county, and the road in front of your house is, is state." Give me a little bit of a runaround. Not that that would make, not that anybody would pay any attention to them, to them signs, they're not anyhow. But, and then they go, "Well, they're putting all these..." I don't need a lawyer and a consultant to, I live there. He goes, "Oh, we put up all these beautiful shrubs and trees, and we're not going to leave it open at night." Don't matter if you leave it open, kids are going to go back, they're never going to have trees to hide behind. I come home from work at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night, and the kids are over there painting paintballs that pass in cars. I mean, that's rare that it happens. I mean, if they go over there and drink beer, I mean, I don't... They can do whatever they want. I don't care because they really don't, I can sleep through a fire and go by my house ten times a night. But to act like the, this isn't going to impact anything, you're crazy. You're going to only have that one egress from the place down the street from my house. Go past my house, I got no shrubs in the front because mine all been run over. Cars flying off the road. And then if you go to the back of my house, I have a busted down, three-foot-high chailing fence. And my neighbor had a beautiful white vinyl fence in front of his house, and somebody ran that thing down, the whole thing. But I, I mean, I have pictures on my phone I could show you. Busted up cars, smashed up because I took it for insurance purposes. Because first three times, I didn't get anything done, and the last time, somebody finally gave me some money for my shrubs, and I didn't put them back in. So I was going to buy a big rock to put on the end of it. There's also, right there on that corner, I don't know, you people probably drive there. There's always like an eighteen-inch hole right on the end of my land, right on the corner. When you make that right to go towards Pleasant Valley, that's Degarmo. And I went out there before with a shovel and filled it myself. Told guys, "You got to come out here and do it. The people are losing their wheels and all kinds of stuff over there." But another seems like anything gets, and you got, you got three lanes, three lanes coming from Walgreens. You got, what is it, four lanes, three lanes coming from Pleasant Valley, three lanes coming from Maccabees, three lanes coming. A lot of traffic goes through there. Just, I mean, I hope they get it right. Because personally, I'm, I'm, I'm getting out there, I think. I wish they would buy my house and put a road right through there. I just got my tax bill today. It was seventy-three, seventy-three hundred dollars. And I haven't gone to school in forty-five years, so. But, yeah, all, what I'm saying, I mean, I understand, people got to make money, people got to do what they got to do. Just, it's a, it's, I mean, I see a lot of people get hurt on that, in that intersection. Because of the way the traffic is, people, and it's not always ass ending each other. It's, what they do is they try to beat the other person coming the other way. You know what I'm saying? The guy will try to make that turn, and the guy is coming the other way. He heads, and then they go flying into my front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I got to say. My house is, my house is right, I'm directly on the corner.
Right in the spot there.
My mom's it. I've been there for thirty years. I mean, I knew, I knew the guy who owned it previous to the guy that has it now, Mr. Caseman. He kept wanting to do something over there, but, I mean, that's neither here nor there. I got, I had my, I had my say, and I thank you for your time.
I appreciate your comments. We'll try to look at that pothole. Sounds like a bad pothole there, accidents. Anyone else wish to comment?
I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom.
No one else wish to comment tonight? Adjourned to November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Go around the board for comments now.
There is some concern about the volume of the producers. If you could provide something from the manufacturer that reflects the amount of the decibel level at peak, at peak performance? We have a noise ordinance that has a limit, the decibel level?
Sixty is our, yeah, I think they showed?
So you could provide us with, just with some documentation with regard to the producers relative to the decibel level?
We could do that, no problem. That would be part of the updated sound.
Okay. You did provide us with a phase-one environmental site assessment. In this, really a second section of it, which, which covers the VERS. The Whitestone, which prepared the ESA, noted there that there was a five-stage underground water filtration system. He comments, a question here for our engineer. A geophysical survey should be conducted in an effort to locate the system components, and media sampling and laboratory analyses should be, could be conducted. Why "could" instead of "should"? Shouldn't it be conducted?
I agree. Yeah, it should be conducted.
Then it should be conducted. And you mentioned earlier that you were going to remove the onsite sanitary disposal system. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the, your consultant's comment here was that geophysical survey should, could be conducted in an effort to locate the disposal system components, and media sampling and laboratory analyses, he says, could be conducted in an effort to evaluate potential impacts. I would suggest that we change that to "should be conducted." Do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, and yet there's also, with regard to the tower, did you, I heard you comment earlier that, that it's really a deal breaker, that if you didn't have the tower, that you wouldn't go ahead with this project. Did somebody say that?
We did not say that. What we said is the tower is an integral part of our design. And so it's actually a feature that exists at all of, all of the Spark car wash facilities. So it's, it's an element that's essentially part of, of who Spark is. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we're obviously here to, to hear feedback from the board in terms of, you know, your, your thoughts and opinions with respect to that.
Did you know that that was part of our zoning ordinance?
We did. We were aware of that.
Before you submitted the application?
Yes. As part of the initial due diligence, we look at zoning compliance in connection with the application.
Thank you.
And also, as we go around, you know, if anybody has comments on any of the, because we'd have to do a majority vote against four different things, so, so if anybody has any comments on those?
Well, the county will, when we get a revised plan, this will also go back to the county.
Yes.
And as usual, they will, they will reconsider, and, you know, they may, they, their conditions sometimes do change.
Yes, there are some things that will change. I consider that some things for shielding the lighting and the noise and such. Do you have anything at this time? It's a new, new project to you.
So I'm sure with this project, what you're laying in, there was not a mention of what the coverage, I mean, to say the camera coverage, I'm sure the whole property covers every bit which has been laid out, right?
Yes, there's, I believe, twenty-five cameras on site that would monitor security.
Okay. And with the space which was laid out, I did, I was not able to figure out any vacant space which can be used for snow storage. Is it an assumption that you're going to use the existing parking spots where there is like heavy snow?
There is three areas outlined on the site plan where snow storage would be. That was a more recent comment to reevaluate the area, so we will do that as part of the next round of revisions. But the plan is to provide space, whether it's in designated locations or pavement areas.
I know you did mention the, the lightings would change during the off-peak hours?
Yes.
Right, right? Do you think it would be a good idea to have a closed sign, closed sign, just to make sure that, just because there is, there would be still lights on the property? Because by seeing those light, people would be assuming that there is something where we can go, right? Would it be a good idea to have a closed sign outside near the entrance? So that it clearly states that you can't enter because this is not the timing where it's in operation?
Yeah, we will, we can discuss that with Spark. The lighting will be reduced, really, just to?
Just security lighting.
For security lighting.
Yeah, lighting is okay.
Yeah.
Talking about some signage outside near the entrance, right, so that it's easy for the?
For signature hours are that you're open.
Right. Yeah, it would be written on a big sign, right? Nobody would even, like, I'm just talking about the entrance, right? If we have a sign there saying that we are closed.
Yep, understood.
This way, it's easy, and there is not much space, right? It's not a, it's like a two-lane there, and you really don't have much space.
You only get one question.
Making it more clear to the public, saying that this is not operable during the time that the signage is there. And one last thing, I do see that there are like two line, two lanes, one for the designated holders and the other for the regular public. But once you enter those lanes, there is no scope of coming back, right? There is no emergency exit in case, if I go there, right? And I'm in the lane, and I, I forgot my purse, I don't have my wallet, and I want to get out, but I still have a couple cars standing behind. How can I get outside?
Immediately before the tunnel entrance, there is an emergency bailout lane for that exact reason.
Okay.
If you give me a second.
The ones with the zebra lines?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
So that's specifically striped out for if somebody comes through and realizes their car's too, too large, they can pull through there if there's, you know, an emergency.
But right in front of that, I could just see those parking spots, so is this like good space enough for the car to go, move out?
Yep, it is, it is much wider than a car to access there.
Okay, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Kind of a short, short bypass, like, that's good. Good, good comment, thanks. We go to Mike.
I just had a couple of questions. The, so for the vacuums, the noise is only at the producers, there's no noise produced at the vacuum site?
There will be noise at the individual vacuums, but the majority of that noise will be provided, or will be produced at the producer.
When you, when you, you're going to be updating the study anyway, the noise study, to include the decibel level of the producers. Could you also include the information on the decibel level at the vacuum booms?
Yes, we can do that.
There are different locations on the site, so we want to make sure that?
Yeah, it's kind of a connected system, but, yeah, they, they sound differently.
Right. Mr. Young, the blade, which we, I know as far as signs on roofs, it's not permitted. Is there any architectural reason for that feature other than to be a sign?
Quite frankly, that height of the blade element, which is significantly higher than the rest of it. When we designed the Spark prototype design, that was the intent from day one. And I will be upfront about that. That's, if you have that element and you don't have signage there, and you put signage elsewhere on the building, it seems off. It seems like you want the signage to be there. Putting signage higher up and driving the site today, it's, it's very difficult to, to see along Degarmo and Duchess if you're heading in certain directions. So the higher up we put a sign, it will be visible from a longer distance away, which we feel, given the volume of traffic, the quicker you're able to identify something, the safer your traffic movement will be as opposed to seeing the sign at the absolute last second, "Oh, here's Spark, turn the wheel to go fly into the space."
Now, has anyone done the calculations to see, because that's a thirty-three-foot-high sign? Right, and it's, it's a, it's lit up, right? So the trees that you're planting at the eastern part of the property, are they going, are they going to be high enough to screen that sign from the second floor of the residence that's immediately to the east of the site?
I can't answer that off the top of my head. However, we can take a look at Poler's engineering's line of site study and extrapolate our sign there. The sign itself won't be at thirty-three feet, the blade element is thirty-three feet. The top of the sign itself, which is the top of the Spark logo, will be approximately one to two feet less than that. So thirty-one or thirty-two feet, but we could provide that data on visibility. It's a great question, and to clarify, that sign is internally illuminated, all the signs are.
Last question. When you, when you were talking about which signs or which lights are off after eight P.M., you did not include the sign on the blade. Was that, is that sign supposed to be lit twenty-four hours a day?
For brand identity, we would prefer not, some of the signage to be on off-hours. However, per the other board members' comment about open or closed, if the sign is not lit, that's an indirect reference to development not being open at that time. So we could take that into consideration in terms of turning the, some, if not all of the signage off during non-operating hours.
Those are just my comments and concerns too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Mike.
No additional comment.
Share.
I think enough has been asked.
Yes.
Yeah, we've gone through a lot, and here's all this back to the noise.
At least.
I appreciate you did all the landscaping on that site. I think that goes a long way.
Tuesday.
I move the planning board determine that this application is incomplete and to defer further action subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following, one through fourteen.
Second?
Second.
Moves in second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes seven zero. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving along. Number nine, LaGrange Avenue.
What's that? You're killing me. Lighting.
Good evening. Brandon Petrella, representing the applicant for nine LaGrange. This will be a much shorter presentation. This is a expansion to an already-approved project.
Yep.
Approximately a year or so ago, and I'll share my screen here, if you just bear with me, one second. It will let me. There we go.
Now, for the new members, this is, this, yeah, this project is already approved, and I just want to add above the garage, some additional storage space.
Correct. Okay. There we go. Okay, so for the new members, yes, this project was originally approved back in mid-two thousand twenty-three. It's a small lot, seventy-five hundred square feet. We changed a two-family residence or two apartment units into four units with a detached garage. This is located on LaGrange Avenue. It's just east of the corner of Raymond. You can see it here, it's highlighted in yellow. No changes are, this amendment results in no changes to the site plan itself. The only change is the request to go from a one-story detached garage to a two-story detached garage. The second story will currently be used for storage for the tenants and for the maintenance of the building. You can see here the floor plan, still a two-story garage, or still two-bay garage, and a small area for the stairs and utilities to come into the space, and then a second-floor storage. The architecture of the building will resemble and be complementary to the apartment building in the front. As you can see, it just has a simple hip roof. It's got a couple gable accents, a few windows, and canopies over the overhead doors and entrance doors to, again, be similar to the front building. We've received some comments from town and their representatives, mostly technical. What we're doing is, because this is a detached, technically commercial garage with storage, it now needs sprinklers, so we have to bring the sprinkler in just because it has storage. So once you bring that sprinkler in, and that point, the owner-
So, once you bring that sprinkler in, and that point, the owner also wants to consider future uses of this building. So we also want to bring sewer in at this time. We don't intend to use the sewer at this time, but we want to run the line because this project is currently under construction and now is the time to do it. Make all of those taps, and then in the future, if we have the ability to use this as a separate use, we would then do that. Obviously, the ultimate goal is to hopefully get enough parking at some point through land acquisition or some other means, and maybe get another unit on this site. That's the ultimate goal of, of the owner. But for the time being, that's not possible, so we'd like to just prepare for the future. Other than that, like I said, we have a couple of technical comments about where the piping is located, whether we need manholes or not, and I think we're going to meet with town staff, engineering, and work with the departments, and whatever you guys need, we'll obviously provide. I don't think there's any issue on where that stuff is located on the site.
Yep, all right, thanks. Yeah, parking was the issue for not having an apartment up there initially, so. Kristin?
Thank you. I'm so brief. It's on for a seeker review for a type-two action, and site plan review, and architectural review. I have very minor comments, Brandon pretty much covered everything. So staff is recommending that you open the public hearing, hear any comments, potentially close the public hearing, a secret resolution for a type-two action and grant a conditional amended site plan approval. Just for the record purposes, applicant will have to go to the Z B A. The zoning administrator provided or documented the required variances. And also, this was circulated to the county planning office and was a matter of local concern. So if the board chose to move forward with a conditional approval this evening, that is all good to go. I will also note that the owner of the property is highly motivated, the property is currently under construction. So, um, not that I'm representing the app, the owner or the applicant, but I, I know that they would like to keep moving, and that is all I'm going to say.
Yeah, it looks nice and quiet, it's working, anything Andy on this?
Uh, yeah, just technical comments, just to kind of clarify a couple of things. The way that the, the plans are currently laid out, the property is only allowed to have one water service connection. So more than that, you have to have a different layout with the water lines. So that's part of the reason, and then there's a lot of bends in the sewer lines. We just have to work that out to figure out the best way to manage that. Technical nature, completely comfortable dealing with that as a condition.
All right, I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. You wouldn't mind stopping the share for just a moment? See if anyone on Zoom wishes to comment on nine Lagrange application. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Let's go around for comments. Nicole?
I don't have any. None.
No comment.
No comments.
It's a nice improvement, good luck.
Thank you.
Yep, same here, parking was the only concern I had, and you're not doing any right now.
No, that's, the owner is pursuing alternate ways to do that, but that's down the line, and we would come for another approval if that were the case at some point.
All right.
I move the planning board hereby determine that nine Lagrange Avenue is a type-two action, part, uh, per part six one seven dot five C nine, requiring no further environmental review.
Moved in second for seeker, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for nine Lagrange Avenue, subject to the following, respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following one through twelve. Second.
Moved in second, conditional, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes, seven, zero. We should do architecture too, right?
Yes.
Uh, he showed up the architecture earlier, and the, anyone have any comments on it? It looked really nice. I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, seven, zero.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I would ask that staff leave the eight hundred and fifty square foot maybe in the front of the meeting next time? Thank you.
Store space on Violet Avenue is back. Good, they had a construction entrance and.
What's that?
So Alec Glad from the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, we're here this evening just to see reapproval of the store space. Nothing has changed, actually, as part of our submission to the board, we included the sign in the site plans, and they're staying the same there. And basically, right now, the, all the previous structures at the site have been removed and demolished, and we've been keeping up with some of our site maintenance and SWIP inspections in the interim. And that's basically it.
I think those billboards stay until this run out or something.
Yeah, I'm not, not sure, but.
And, or you get, you got the variances?
Yep, so we got reapproval of the variances on September ninth, so I think you are the last step this evening, just for the site plan special permit and then the architectural reissues.
All right, thanks. Kristin?
Yes, thank you. Short and sweet, thank you. It's on for reapproval. Just by way of going through it for the record, it is a type-two action, subject to a coordinated review. The planning board declared their intent to be lead agency in January twenty twenty-two. No objections were received, the planning board adopted determination of significance and negative declaration dated April twenty first, twenty twenty-two. The planning board, continuing as lead agency, is encouraged to discuss the application and adopt a resolution for seeker reapproval. There are no proposed changes submitted with this reapproval application. It is also on for a site, uh, excuse me, special use permit review, in addition to site plan review. There were a couple of, uh, criteria that go with this particular use under the special use permit requirement. One of them is about lighting, the applicant is adhering to the town code language. The other is about parking, where the applicant was approved to place as few as ten parking spaces on the, the property. The only thing I was asking for is an updated title sheet so that we can get all new signatures on the plan, just, it's good for housekeeping. And then it's on for public hearings, so staff is recommending that the board open the public hearing, hear any comments, potentially close the hearing, adopt a seeker reapproval resolution. There is a NAGDAC that is in your packet, it's essentially the same product, but updated. There was some parcel merging and all of that that took place as part of the prior approval process, so I just wanted that to be clear for the record. And then the, and then, um, staff is recommending adoption of a resolution to grant special, grant conditional special use permit approval and conditional site plan approval and conduct architectural review. There we go.
All right, thanks, Kristin, Andy?
Yeah, we really had very few, if any, comments on this. I did want to find out if you made any progress on the drainage easement with the county?
Yes.
That's kind of what held up the project?
Yeah, so we met with them last week, it looks like this time around it should be a lot quicker. So our team's just still working with them on finalizing that, but we hope to have something soon.
Great. That's all we got?
All right. I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Anyone wish to comment, can you unshare your screen? Yeah, I think Mike is sharing, right?
Yeah.
Yep, there we go, thank you. Just to double check if anyone wishes to comment on the store space application. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Four rounds for comments, Peter?
No.
None.
None, none.
Yep, same as before, you, you had a lot of good landscaping to screen through the houses residential nearby, and keeping that the same is good.
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determine that the store space self-storage Violet Avenue reapproval would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for reasons set forth in determination of significance, negative declaration originally dated April twenty first, twenty twenty-two, now with a reapproval date of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Moved in second for seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move the planning board grant conditional special use permit reapproval and conditional site plan reapproval, including all requested design standard waivers for store space self-storage Violet Avenue, subject to the following, respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to the following one through twelve.
Second.
Moved in second for conditional, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, seven, zero. Architecture, um, nothing's changing in the architecture from before?
Still the same.
Still the same. Any comments on that?
No.
I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, seven, zero.
Thank you very much.
Good to go, and your construction entrance is already constructed. I don't want to get a call this time, you know, six months from now saying that we're not going forward, right?
No, no, no.
All right.
This one's definitely happening.
All right. Very good. We have a few adjournments to, to cover. What's that? That was, uh, the, uh.
That was store space.
Store space.
Yeah.
We've got, we've got a few adjournments, couple of adjournments.
Yeah, yeah, getting there.
Ten IBM Road was withdrawn from a consideration. Eight Tucker Drive, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Beacon Residential, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Locust Grove Crossing, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Manor Hill, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Metro Roofing, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And Washco Car Wash, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. It could be, well, depends which ones come back at which time. At this time, I move we allow public comment on other remaining agenda items.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anyone in the room or on the Zoom wish to comment on any remaining items? Seeing none, I move we continue the meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, if all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. C one Bambini Parking Facility, North Road, come on down, Price is Right.
I feel like it's a race now to be as fast as possible.
I was so glad, I was so glad to see this in our paperwork because my kids go to Bambini.
Oh, great.
And the last time I was there, I had to park right in front where like the UPS park truck, you know, park, you know, for delivery and stuff, because there was no parking spots.
Yep.
I'm not usually a proponent at, for parking lots as, as a planner, but when it's necessary, yeah.
It's very necessary.
I'll start, let me share my screen real quick. All right, my name's Natalie Quinn, I work with K A R C Planning Consultants. And tonight, I'm representing the owner of the property, which is currently Baxter Development Company, or Eric Baxter is the applicant. And the, one of the users of the property is Bambini Pediatrics, who is looking to purchase the properties. And in order to kind of facilitate that, what they need to purchase this property and stay here at this location is more parking for their employees. So that's what we'll be talking about tonight. So, uh, let me just get this smaller so I can see. So the parcels were, or the parcel we are looking at is two thirty-one North Road, which is in the town of Poughkeepsie. This is the parcel where the new proposed parking facility will be located. This parcel, as you can see in this image, is split by a paper road, so it kind of falls within two zoning districts. But per the comments from planning staff, we will be focusing just on the larger portion that's kind of on the bottom, on the south side here, which falls within the R twenty zoning district. But Bambini facility is actually located in the city of Poughkeepsie, so it's just across the line on two oh seven Washington Street. This falls in with the city's R two zoning district. And then we will also be looking at this small parcel also in the city of Poughkeepsie in the R two zoning district. And so the intention is to merge all of these lots into a single lot so that this parking facility will be accessory to the existing structure and, and all owned by, by the new owner. Just to make this board aware, we did have to go for a zoning interpretation to, to talk about this, and the lot consolidation is a condition of that interpretation, right? That they do have to be merged together so that this is accessory parking to the existing facility. Here's the site plan. So, um, there are, you know, on the existing parcel, there are, um, billboards that have been there since, since nineteen fifties. Those are not intended to be touched or, or relocated, so we are working around those. So that's why you see this parking facility here, it is just north of the Bambini facility. It is twenty-two parking spaces, and this is intended to be for employees only, so that they, they can open up more spaces within the existing parking facility for users so that folks bringing in their children and, and clients for the business can be closer to kind of the main entrance to the facility. This is just kind of an aerial to kind of show, you know, this is, uh, right now, the property, as I said, is vacant. The site where the parking facility will be is vacant, except for five hundred square feet of it is currently used by billboards. The improvements of the parcel, right now, we're currently focused largely on, on the lot in question with a small portion of the retaining wall going into two oh seven Washington Street, that property. So at this time, we have been in con- in conversation with city of Poughkeepsie, and they did not feel like planning board approval was necessary for that, that slight bit of the retaining wall. But as we go through other potential improvements and comments about additional connections and sidewalks and crossings, we may have to go before city of Poughkeepsie planning board as well, which we will do if, if we need to do that. But right now, there's only minor improvements on two oh seven Washington Street. So, you know, just as a, we are proposing landscaping right now. The landscaping is largely kind of along the retaining wall at the rear portion of, of the site. Looking at comments, I think there may be some desire for, for landscaping towards the front of the lot, so we're happy to discuss that. And then lighting, there are five light poles proposed, there is a, a inconsistency with the plans, which we will clean up, that there was on the, on the lighting plan, it was making it look like a, a six pole at the front, which will be removed, and then hopefully that will update the lighting plan to be compliant, so there's no spillage over that front portion, portion of the property. So that's my quick presentation, I'll just jump back up to the site plan so we can talk about that. The one other comment that I did want to address, because I think it came up in both planning staff and engineering, is we have been in conversation with D O T, they do not believe this is within their jurisdiction. The portion in front of two oh seven Washington Street is city of Poughkeepsie maintained road, and so I'm assuming they're stating that this is town, but we'll forward those emails and we'll check back in with La Rose as well, too. But we do have that email correspondence we can share.
Finger pointing things.
Sorry?
I was finger pointing things.
Yeah, exactly, not ours.
I've never heard of the D O T not wanting jurisdiction.
So that's it for, for my presentation. Just wanted to kind of introduce the project to the board and get any initial comments. I know we have comments from engineering, which Ken L, L R C is our, is our engineering firm on this, so he'll be reaching out to you, but I think we understand all those comments, and we'll just reach out to you to make sure we know exactly what you want in the next submission. There were some planning comments too that we'll have a response to. And then there was zoning comments about the, from the Z E O regarding the billboards. And, and it is our understanding that there is state law that precedes that local law, so we'll, we'll have the attorney kind of draft a response to that as well.
Thanks, Natalie.
Yeah.
Go to Kristin.
Okay, great, thank you for hitting pretty much everything. So it's on for seeker review for an unlisted action, subject to a coordinated review. Staff is recommending that the planning board circulate their intent to serve as lead agency to interested and involved agent, interested and involved agencies. I did take a look at the E A F, thank you for touching on the D O T consultation conversation, because I actually did reach out to them directly myself, and I was like, can you give us some clarity here? Like, I just wanted a straight answer. That ultimately led to, I'm going to ask this other person, and then I never received a response. So we'll make sure that we clarify that for the project record. Ultimately, whether or not, you need to know whether or not you would need to pull a permit or not anyway, so we'll just. Ultimately, whether or not, you need to know whether or not you would need to pull a permit or not anyway, so we'll just work through that.
Yep.
Um, I think there was, uh, um, there was a reference to, um, ship focus consultation mapping, but then I didn't see a memo in the file, so I didn't know if that was something that maybe you had received, or you was under...
We hadn't gotten their response yet, so they kind of acknowledged our submittal, but we hadn't gotten comments back from them. They had requested some additional information, which we gave them, so we'll follow up again and hopefully have that.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and then just always, I'm looking to confirm, this is like all my applications at this point, um, area of physical disturbance. Um, so just making sure that whatever is identified in the A F is consistent with what's being shown on the plan. I know sometimes those numbers do shift as the project is under review. So just being consistent there. Um, most of the comments, this is the first time the application is coming to the board, are pretty standard comments for a first time review of an application. I think we can work through most of this, we can always meet, we always offer that we can meet in terms to your, prior to your next submission. I'm sorry, I'd offer that. So at this time, staff is recommending that the board adopt a seeker lead agency intent resolution, um, and defer action with comments pending a revised submittal and, you know, ultimately, um, getting their lead agency notification out.
All right, thanks Kristen. Andy?
Yeah, um, you know, there's not a lot to this project, but there is a significant amount of excavation that's gonna be proposed. Do you, have you done any borings? You know if you're dealing with rock, or is it...
Um, I think there, there was some, there was some soil testing, but I'll have to have Ken, I don't think we've done any borings, but it, there is a rock outcrop, so we're assuming, uh, bedrock. I think you were part of the conversations, we had originally looked at locating the parking facility up on the top, rather than having to be down here and do excavating, and this was the preferred location.
This is a better location.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Um, the problem is, is that, you know, you know, with this amount of cut, you're talking about fifteen, you know, fifteen foot retaining walls.
It's gonna be a costly retaining, a large costly retaining wall, yeah.
It's gonna be a costly retaining wall, and you're so close to existing building, there's no way you could blast.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna be a long time hammering rock, um, if it's...
I think it was the intention to blast.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's why I think we're gonna have the, because to your point, that is one, I know there's a lot of work that we have to do in terms of the blasting mitigation plan and everything, but that is one instance versus months.
Oh, no doubt, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Chipping, so, for the, for the benefit, I don't know if that's me, I'm sorry, for the benefit of the neighbors, it was our intent to, to go with blasting if that becomes necessary, so I think we'll reach out and chat through that.
Conversation.
Yeah.
Definitely want to take a look at that plan. Um, and then the only other thing is, you, you are, there is a proposed, um, I'm not sure if it's actually supposed to be infiltration or if it's just detention, uh, but there is an underground system here, so if we are dealing with rock, you know, obviously infiltration of rock is a problematic issue. Um, so, um, that's pretty much it. Um, I do, I mean, I, I did want to point out to the board that, you know, because they're putting the wall right up against the building, um, it looks like there's gonna be a, a s- s- between six and seven feet of, of existing foundation that's gonna be exposed. So you may want to think about screening it somehow to, because that's not gonna be pretty.
That will be the back of the building, though, and you do not, you do, you don't, I mean, the only people that will see that are the employees.
That are parking.
I'm not sure what you could see from the road, that's...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Because, because it's, it's the other side and the back of the building in which, um, people come into that building, so.
Well, I'll go around for some comments, uh.
Um, if I'm reading this correctly, I've seen a change in elevation here of almost thirty feet, and a span of probably a hundred and sixty feet. So, you're, you're gonna prepare, uh, we have a blasting ordinance, are you gonna prepare a blasting plan? Are you contemplating doing that in the future?
Yeah, I, yes, I, based on the comments from engineering, talking about how rock will be removed, like I said, I think we'll, it's, we, we have ongoing conversations to have with, um, Andy, but...
Do you think, uh, this is for, uh, Mr. Lern, this, uh, triggers a geotechnical report for a site like this, with that type of removal of material?
I mean, it would be wise, for sure, because you want to know what you're dealing with when you're dealing, drilling this rock and blasting it.
Because there is surface rock there.
Yep.
So maybe a geotechnical study, uh, would be in, in order here.
Yep.
Particularly because of proximity to that building.
Exactly.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter. Uh, Sid, anything?
Just curious, ma'am, what, what kind of, uh, parking spots are we looking for the employees there? I also take my children there, it's always crowded, but just curious to know what space are we looking for the employees? How many parking spots?
Twenty-two spaces.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two spaces for staff.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
I think in the pre-op, you said there's different shifts that come through, so that's, they're adequate for all the employees.
Yeah.
So what, is that just for Bambini, though, because there are other medical...
No, it'll be, it, it will be Bambini.
Sorry, hold on one sec.
It's just weird the way sometimes it's really bad and other times it's fine. All right, yeah, I think so.
So that's, it's just for Bambini, though, right?
The priorities, but based on the shifts, that won't be, the full twenty-two won't be necessary for just Bambini, so there will be, we still need to work out exactly per shift, but there will be something that will be allowed for the other offices within that space as well.
Yeah, because, uh, obviously, there's other offices in there.
The intent will be to fill that lot with employee vehicles.
Okay.
You know, by, by, whether it's a registration ticket or what.
It'll be like two oh seven Washington Street, employee entrance or something like that.
Yes, exactly.
And you can, and you can encourage some employees to ride their bike if you put a bike in.
I love that.
Yeah, there you go, okay. I don't have anything else.
Any other comments, let's see.
No.
All right, um, I guess the only question I had, I thought I saw an electrical box kind of near where it, on the ground there, or is it, or is it further down the...
An existing, sorry, I...
Yeah, like a big, one of those big green boxes. Maybe it's, maybe it was not quite in its spot.
Well, I'll, we'll show, I know that it was requested that we have the original survey included within it, and so I'll do that and look at, to see.
Just double check that it's not in the way there, because something's gotta move electrical.
Yeah.
And I also thought, uh, you know, further south, there's tree trees there, maybe a tree on each side of the entrance there, it would be nice. Can do that. And that's my say, and...
I move that the planning board declares intent to serve as lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of notice of said intent, a copy of the E A F and a copy of the applications identified in interested and involved agencies. Second.
Moved in seconded for lead agency, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes, seven to zero.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including and unlimited to the following one through thirteen.
That includes planning board comments of the trees and bikers.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes, seven to zero.
All right, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thanks Natalie, have a good night. Next stop, Stratford Farms.
So Stratford Farms, yeah, just a quick reminder to everybody, for Stratford Farms, they did ask to be removed from the agenda for this month, but they, I believe, anticipate coming back next month, so please hold on to your materials.
Yep.
I know, it's a little, just so that we don't have to waste a lot of copies. All right, sorry, next up.
Yep, that, that's a good reminder, you should send a note as well for that, but that's good. All right, now we have, uh, Seven Spring Side.
We will keep it as brief as possible. Thank you all, uh, tonight, we would like to present our proposal for the renovation of, uh, Seven Spring Side Avenue. I'll share some preliminary plans right now. Uh, my name is Cameron Cussera, I'm here representing the design team and our architect of record, Teru Ilgan Architects, P L L C. Um, this is Ms. Jessica Ramos, the property owner, and representing, uh, Women of All Trades LLC. So she will give you a brief overview of her vision for this renovation project, and I will go through the technical, um...
Yes, so, um, at first, there was a big, um, to-do, I, I bought this property thinking that I will help and, um, build sort of like a shelter, you know, for women that are going through domestic violence. Certainly, there's a lot of, um, ins and outs that I didn't know about building. So, um, then I, I figured, you know, I will create a home for my family. My kids are all adults, they're going to college, they still live with me, but they still need their space, and, and, and I wanna, I'm, you know, support them in that. So I want to be able to do that for them with this property, and of course, create, um, some more, you know, housing for the people that we serve in our community, because I am a social worker. So my goal was to do an office, my, my, um, practice, which I now work off another person's practice, and I know, I don't make as much as I do, and I still owe a lot of, uh, what I study for. I still, you know, have to pay that, um, back, so I want to make my own practice in the, um, in the downstairs, and then create, um, housing opportunities possibly for, um, recipients of Section eight, and, um, people that need housing, and, um, women that are going through, um, you know, um, survival from domestic violence. And so with that, yeah, that's, um, basically my humble plan for the use of that property.
So, the, uh, the site is located in A T C zoning, and the lot is, uh, point one five acres, single-family residential currently. We are looking to densify the residential on the site, adding three additional units, two duplexes, with a total of three bedrooms each and one, uh, two-bedroom apartment. We are looking for, looking to use the, uh, the incentives for mixed-use zoning in A T C by providing a commercial space on the ground floor of the garage, which we, we would be looking for a change of use permit. Uh, this space would be occupied by Ms. Ramos and her practice, um, and would enable us to exploit the clause, I believe it's, uh, section E subsection two of the A T C zoning, that allows for, uh, density exclusions for mixed-use properties where the dwelling units are located above the, uh, commercial space. If you look at the, the site plan, you'll see that our biggest, um, constraint is just space. So we've allotted seven parking spaces. Almost all of them require an agreement with the city because they're in easement. As you know, the fitting parking to meet, uh, code requirements in this area is difficult at best, especially, um, looking to provide more housing with the one point five parking spaces per dwelling requirement. So, based off of our initial preliminary meetings, um, we saw this as the area where you have the most, uh, ability to kind of adjudicate the circumstances of this proposal, given the fact that we are trying to provide more housing in the neighborhood and, um, increase the amount of mixed-use, uh, uh, occupancy of the, the buildings in this area. So, just as an argument to our point, this building is directly across the street from an automotive garage, so it's not like we're inserting commercial into, you know, a single-family residential neighborhood. Um, and it involves the arterial on the other side, so, you know, it's a humble project, and we greatly appreciate your consideration for this proposal.
It's right in front of Wendy's, too, and Taco Bell. So it's perfect for my families.
All right, thanks for your presentation, uh, Eric?
Sure, um, it, it's on for board discussions, so there's, you know, commitments either way on this. Um, but they're, while they're continuing to, they've, they've actually done, made a lot of progress. We've had a couple of meetings with them, and, um, to their credit, they've, they've dealt with some significant building inspection, inspector issues and zoning issues. Um, what they would, it's appropriate for the A T C district, uh, this kind of mixed use. Uh, they, it would need a number of zoning variances, it's a very small lot. The density allowed on it would be less than, for, for multi-residential use, would be less than one unit, and it's already a single-family house. So I think the question for the board's discussion really has to do with the intensity of the use, and how much are you comfortable with, uh, for this neighborhood and for the, you know, the number of variances that it would require. So that, I think that's really the discussion for the board, before they go ahead and commit more resources to, to filling out the application and the plans to make everything, it's a pretty tight fit. So before they invest further in that, I suggest, I think, that we do well to get feedback from the board.
And we...
Oh, I'll just mention, one thing that did not come up in our previous discussions, I happened to notice in looking through the district regulations, is that there is a design guideline that empowers the planning board to require, uh, a mix of uses, uh, in the A T C district, and to ensure residential use generally does not exceed eighty percent of the total floor area. And I, we haven't looked at that particular number, so that would be something to look at, uh, going forward.
But that, you mentioned that's a, a guide, it's in the design guidelines, so there's, so it's, so it's a...
So that would just, that would also be another item subject to the planning board's discretion, but we'll want to have that number for them to consider.
Yep, thank you.
I just want to also point out, before you continue, right across the street, um, um, I believe number five, Spring, Spring Side, is also a residential with about three, um, apartments there as well. So it's not like we're not following suit with the people that we have, you know, that we're sharing the street.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, to some of the new board members, that the two houses to the left, to the west of them, were taken on by somebody else and turned into apartments, and they did a nice job with that.
With unconventional parking as well.
Right.
Some of the, exactly.
Yes.
Parking is, is, it is a very narrow street as well, as part of the...
So, yeah.
And the only thing I would mention is that, you know, you're looking to get three stories here, most of the other houses in the area are just two stories, but, uh, so if that's too much or not, we'll see another board member's thing.
Yeah, because the first story is, um, also garages, we have, we're gonna keep them as garages for the parking, you know, use. So it's literally just gonna be two usable stories, which is why.
It was not clear in the F M R four, from the, you showed the two garages, but then you showed parking in front of the garages also, so that, how that would be negotiated.
Yeah, the reason why we're hoping that we can do that is because since the, um, residents that's already there, we're gonna be using, myself, which I'm the owner, with, um, my kids, we're gonna be using the parking. So we're more likely to be able to, um, negotiate the park, parking use if you do allow, you know, us to have parking use from inside and out, because it's a very big driveway. It's pretty, you know, um, big where if we are able to, you know, accommodate the cars, there could be, you know...
Yeah, the pavement, pavement on your land is wide enough to...
Wide enough.
Put another car in front of the garage.
Exactly.
Yep, okay.
You allow it.
Uh, let me just go around, uh, what the further thoughts.
I mean, as a woman, um, I love this project, but I think it's a lot for a very small space. But I mean, you know, it, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I think it could possibly be doable. I just don't know, I just, I don't know, like, like Carl said, like, the three-story thing, I'm not sure, because as, as he's saying, around you, there is mostly two-story. I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I...
But it's, but it's, it's A T C zoning also to keep in mind.
Right, right.
Correct, and it doesn't exceed the height of the existing structure.
Right, yeah.
Oh, it's not exceeded the height of...
Yeah, the existing structure is three, like, has a walkable attic, but the roof peak is higher than what we're proposing.
Oh, okay.
And compliant with A T C zoning.
Yep, right.
Yeah, the other thing I didn't realize when I looked at this briefly before was that these are duplexes, too, which I think helps with that parking situation.
Yeah.
Because each of those units, you know, is a, is a family unit, right? So, uh, and so they might have two cars, but they can negotiate, just like...
Right.
Anybody who has a single driveway negotiates who gets to park in and parks out. So that, that, that's interesting, I hadn't really paid attention to that.
So if I understand, you have four, you, forget about the office space, because that shows, you have four units. The homes that had moved next to you, how many did they get into those homes, do you know?
I think it's about three apartments.
Okay, what's that, I don't think it was four.
Three or four, right.
I don't think it was four, but, okay, I remember.
Yeah, because I have four units with the existing already, um, structure that's, the residents that I have already.
So you're gonna have one three floors, two two floors, and one, just one floor.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
But this says existing three-story.
Yeah, that's mine, that's the one, that the one that's there already, separate from the car garage, it's a three-story.
This one here is existing, and the only thing is the garage behind it, so it wants to put these two on top.
Oh, okay.
That would be my one concern, are you putting more than anybody else has, but maybe you're gonna be successful, and then that'll be the benchmark for the next person, so...
Yeah, and, and what we're doing is just mim- mim- mimicking the structure that we have there. We're keeping it the same height, we're not, you know, um, inventing more height. We're just, you know, using the structure that's already there, which is already, uh, three-story, you know, house, residence, and just, you know, following suit, and trying to give whoever lives there a good... And trying to give whoever lives there a good, appropriate place to live.
Safe housing, and we've been, uh, in dialogue with the fire chief a lot about creating adequate egress for this kind of addition, um, especially this terrace balcony entry on the second floor. It has two egress stairs, it's easily accessible by the ladder truck, these were big kind of concerns that we had ironed out.
Yeah, I mentioned that sprinkler as well.
All right.
Yeah, we've discussed sprinklers and we're prepared to sprinkle it.
Definitely.
You might wanna double-check the fire flow rates, is the dead-end line, and the Arlington District has notoriously low flow rates, so you might wanna double-check that, cause you might have to do some mitigation inside to, to count, to account for that.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, get to anything else?
That's all I had.
Just conceptual discussion here. Anything, uh, Sharon or Mike?
I just had a question, uh, you'd mentioned that another project had resolved the parking issue with some kind of non-standard parking?
Yeah, it's really not.
What is that?
They, they, what, you can say.
They have stacked parking going back with a single lane, something that I haven't seen before. It looks difficult to negotiate, to be perfectly honest, um, probably harder than what we're proposing, whereas like you're negotiating a single stack, this is a full stack back into the lot with a single entry lane and exit lane.
And that's, yeah, and then, and they've been working it.
And it's shared between, it's shared between two properties as well.
Yes, cause he has two properties with the same parking.
So you're saying the other property has, you mean tandem parking, just one space beyond the other, so that?
It appears, I haven't, I haven't, like, uh, done a lot of research into this parking situation, but it appears that there are two properties with two, three, three apartment buildings with a shared driveway and a shared lot, where they have this stack going back, and then it even turns the corner and stacks again.
Five and three.
You have a neighbor behind you, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, by building up three floors, are you still gonna be far enough, you're not extending the building, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
So the whole property line.
The footprint is not changing on these existing buildings. Like, if you look at the, uh, the elevation on the top here, this dashed black line shows the existing structure. We're only building, uh, the only thing that changes the footprint is the egress stairs.
And they, and they had, um, you know, we made sure that we had the land surveyor, he actually shared his survey with my surveyor, which he followed with whatever he did. And I was okay with it, I just wanna be okay with my neighbors, and, um, you know, they know what's going on, and we had, um, communications back and forth about it. And, um, it's not gonna exceed, cause their house is all, is probably in a hill, and even a little bit taller. So.
Yeah, the hill, the road goes up.
Yes.
Toward the.
So we're not, you know, they still have a view.
How close are the, uh, proposed egress, egress stairs that are at the back of the property to the property line?
Oh, check it out.
Scale's about four feet.
Yeah.
On the side.
Is this, is that gonna require variance?
Well, I have a little bit of the part of the, um, if, look at the scope to the, um, the map, the survey map, the Medical Trades, um, map of property. If you look at where their, their thing, um, is, you look at the four feet, that's how many feet out. It's, um, I can't see it in mine, because I gave you guys the big, the big map, and I got a little map.
So, it, it, I, I know the zoning administrator, that there will be some variances required. Um, I don't know if they apply to stairways or not, um, and A T C is pretty generous with the setbacks is only a zero-foot side yard setback. It kinda depends on her interpretation of what's up side and what's rear.
I mean, the stairs will be something you're adding to the, to the north side.
Yeah, correct, that is the only increase of the footprint, but I was under the impression that was a permissible kind of, uh.
Hell, so do you know how much, how wide that is, the stair?
Stair core is, uh, seven foot two.
Okay.
The survey, I can read the survey here, the survey says that the existing garage is setback eleven point four feet from the property line.
Okay, so it'll take about two-thirds of it out. Could, could you, did you give any thought, how, like, how would the, the parking spaces, um, each of the two garage parking spaces has more than one parking space in front of it? So, how, how would that work? Like if.
What are you talking about?
Um, I would, I would, um.
Oh, yeah.
Say that parking space one would be coordinating with parking space three, parking space two would be coordinating with parking space five, and if we need to pull four back in order to get an adequate, um, kind of turning space to get.
Parking space one, if P three, parking space three is empty, and parking space four is occupied, can parking one space, can space, can P one get out?
That would be the idea, because, um, you can see there's a, you know, a structural column for the deck right there, kind of centered on parking space four, so you'd basically drive straight in, take a small curve into your garage, and same thing if you were backing out.
Maybe, maybe, maybe when you come back, if you could show that that's feasible, that might be really helpful, cause I, I know just in terms of parking, that was my, that was my biggest question.
Okay.
I know how shuffling cars goes, when my kids are visiting.
Yeah.
Too many cars in the driveways.
Yes.
So it's, but it's, if it's all individual renters, that becomes more of a problem than somebody who's related.
Yeah.
So.
And I'd also like to point out, one other thing is that we are proposing an A D A kind of parking space and accessible unit, you know? So, currently, that's not existing on the site, um, and that would also serve the office space as well. A D A bathroom in the, uh, existing house.
That'd be a challenge too, with the, it's a park, if they're going like this. But if you can make that work.
But the A D A parking is right there, it's not, it's not in the, um.
It's about the slope.
It's on the right, oh, on the slope.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this building occupied now?
Well, as of now, we have nobody, we're trying, we're trying to get it together.
Yeah, there are no existing tenants of the building.
Yeah.
Is, so, in, in this drawing, the, P three, P seven, it looks like they go over the property line. Who owns that property, is that the property?
That's, that's into the road.
That's the road, yeah.
Yeah, they would have to be, you would have to.
Who owns that road, that's it?
I believe that's a town.
That's a town.
Yeah.
Could be, too.
It would require town board license or agreement or easement.
Which we have done in other places, in New Orleans.
The highway department did not seem like, uh, it would be an issue for them.
Yeah, it took that in.
It took that in, that's what will help.
The concern is for, parking has to be off the street for snowplow.
Yes.
Winter, so that's, so that's the main concern, if there's still enough room in the pavement for snowplow, snowplow.
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing right now is this one big paved tarmac up to the building, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I, my, my, that's paved by my home.
Uh, anything from you guys on that end, Peter?
I just, uh, two comments. One, Ms. Ramos, uh, on behalf of our community, God bless you, and thank you. You know, fourteen years ago, some friends of mine and I started a not-for-profit for a single women with small children. We now have two facilities, one in Dutchess County, one in Orange County. We just went over our, our hundred thousand night of service. So I have a keen awareness of what you're doing and the, and the service that you provide, and the need that there is in the community, so thank you for what you do. The other thing is, uh, Mr. Holman is a great resource, you know, before you get in too deep, you know, if you have any questions, he's your man.
He's been great so far.
He's been the man.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's very knowledgeable, and he, he will be, he's a great guide.
Yeah.
For someone, particularly for someone in your position.
Yeah, he has steered me very well.
Good luck.
Anything else? I mean, I guess I was initially, you know, concerned because I saw the three stories, but it is at, if you point out, it is at the same height as the, uh, house in front, so. Any last minute comments from anyone?
Yep.
I wish you well.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Nothing else for us to fix?
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet. There's still time.
Don't say that to me. Do we need to, um, um, can we, um, start the variances and this stuff so that we can come back next month?
We're, we're, we're not zoning, we're planning.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so what we do?
You have to, so then you have to, uh, create an act, actual application to the zoning.
You got this, that's my team.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for hanging in there.
Okay, we got you hanging in there, and you didn't even need a shot.
You might need a shot now.
Why?
All right, next up, we have a time extension, Stratford Farms Town Homes. I move that the planning board can grant the time extension of conditional final major subdivision approval from September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, forward to March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
To match the approval of hope. To match the approval period of conditional subdivision.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Lastly, we have one more item that might be sticked to a zoning map amendment.
Yep, so, uh, as, last night, the town board did indeed adopt a resolution which, um, referred this, uh, proposed zoning map amendment to us for, to the planning board for a recommendation. Uh, they also did set the public hearing for October sixteenth, uh, and, and, which is the day before our next planning board meeting, so that's why it was added on to the agenda for, for tonight. Uh, basically, it's taking a, a property that's owned office research, uh, and requesting to have it rezoned into the neighborhood business district, which is the same as the property, uh, next to it. Uh, this would allow the owner some more options in terms of leasing ground floor space in this two-story commercial building, um, and, uh, you know, the town board seemed very, uh, supportive of this, uh, last night, uh, so we've asked, uh, if you recommend a positive recommendation, uh, or convey a positive recommendation to the town board, uh, regarding the map amendment.
Thank you. No, I think we should not make any legislative decisions if the town board wants to make that decision, or not.
So, so neutral.
You like, you, you really like the neutral judgment?
Yes. Neutral, yes.
Anybody else, comments on that?
No comments.
Nope.
I like the neutral. I just feel like something being sprung on us without a lot of information.
Neutral's good.
Yeah.
It's fine, you know, I mean, it makes, I think it's fine, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
He's come up with that before.
I mean, by law, they have to refer it to us to, for a recommendation, so we generally have been saying, uh, I move that the planning board can lay a neutral recommendation to the town board regarding the proposed zoning map amendment for two six six eight South Road.
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Any other business that anyone would like to bring up for the board tonight?
I'd like to congratulate our, our two members for surviving their first meeting.
Yeah, look what you signed up for.
I also wanted to.
What would you do if they didn't?
I also wanna thank, uh, Ben again for his many, many years of service.
Yes, yeah.
He's had, he's had a lot of great comments, and he knew, he knew a lot of information about the gas stations. Thanks, Ben.
I, I move that we terminate tonight's meeting. Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're out.
All right. Good night, Chris, good night, Bob.